I apologize, I was having a little technical difficulty here. So I'm back on.
Okay, we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Okay, so I'll call the meeting to order, caller roll please.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Present.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith?
Here.
Mayor Dan Holliday?
Hello?
Oh, Mayor, did we lose you again?
Uh, I think we did.
It's muted.
Yep.
Here. Do you hear me that time?
Yes, we did hear you that time.
All right, something about having this window open. Anyway, uh, can't see my gins at the same time, what's next?
So we're gonna move to the citizen comment, and we do have some citizens wanting to speak. So the first up would be the DOKA Board Member or Chair Zach Stokes.
Good evening, my name is Zach Stokes, I live in Oregon City. Myself and Kelly Upkey is a fellow member of the board are here tonight commenting on behalf of the Downtown Oregon City Association Board of Directors. This is in follow-up to our letter to the Commission regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion. As an organization, we're in unanimous support of the city's resolution declaring the city's stance against racism, discrimination, and social injustices. We are concerned for the long-lasting effects the city's perception regionally will have on all our citizens and our community holistically. Practically speaking, we have found that the current perception of our community in the region is negatively affecting our ability to fill vacant spaces in downtown. We appreciate the city's efforts, and will continue to strive to make Downtown Oregon City welcoming to all races, genders, age groups, sexual orientations, and ability levels. I appreciate the ability to comment tonight, and for all of the city's efforts over the last several months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who's next?
So we have Victoria Ming from the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, and Victoria has passed out a letter, and I'll email that to you after the meeting.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Victoria Minig, I am a resident of Oregon City, and I am the CEO of the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. We appreciate this chance to respond to voice an official position on the current events pertaining to our city and the mayor. The mission of the Chamber of Commerce is to work together to build a vibrant economy and enhance the quality of life for the Oregon City community. As we stated in our June 2 newsletter, we, the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce, stand against racism, inequality, and discrimination of any kind. We believe violence is never the solution, but that we should pay attention. We believe we must confront the uncomfortable truth of systematic inequality, and as leaders, we can work toward an equitable future. After all, we're in this together. The Oregon City Chamber of Commerce Board and the Government and Economic Affairs Committee has voted on a resolution regarding the actions of the mayor. Whereas on June 17, the Oregon City Commission formally censured Mayor Dan Holliday regarding several of his recent actions, including but not limited to: One, preventing the commissioners from speaking at a public meeting regarding matters of critical local and national importance. Two, his public remarks damaging the struggles and experiences of people of color within the community. Whereas the Commission also directed city staff to arrange for an independent investigation of other recent activities and behaviors of the mayor. Whereas the mayor's recent actions have damaged the governmental and economic reputation of Oregon City to the detriment of our business community and economic development. And whereas the Chamber has resolved to take a public position on the actions of the mayor. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce expresses serious concern that the mayor's recent comments and activities have put in jeopardy the Chamber's mission that supports our working together to build a vibrant economy and enhance the quality of life for the Oregon City community. Specifically, the mayor's actions endanger the ability of the Oregon City Chamber to help build a strong economy in Oregon City, to promote Oregon City as a destination and a place to do business. The Chamber fully supports the city commission's censure of Mayor Dan Holliday. The Chamber further supports the Commission's independent investigation into the mayor's activities. The Chamber recommends the Commission consider an amendment to the charter to allow for a fine, suspension, or possible expulsion. This resolution was approved and adopted by the vote of the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce Board and the Government and Economic Affairs Committee the 22nd day of June 2020. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else, Kate?
Yeah, we've got Derek Metzen, and after Derek, we've got Bob LaSalle, and we have just a couple more.
All right.
Hello, thank you. My name is Derek Metzen. For those of you I haven't met, I've served on several boards and committees at the city and county level. Been solicited for my opinion professionally, I give it to you unsolicited today. I was reading the news on the evening of June 8, and was surprised to discover the emergency council meeting that was held to discuss Mayor Holliday's comments. Reading through that and then watching the meeting online, I have to say, I did not find anything largely objectional about his comments. I believe that the conversation needs to be had, that the state of Oregon is not evaluating the rioting and protests with the same level scrutiny as it comes to personal protection and distancing as they are other people and citizens today. And that deserves a discussion. I also don't think it's wrong to ask people to fact-check themselves. If anything, he was calling that gentleman out as having his facts inaccurately low, but certainly we should question the facts when they come to us. And I do not believe Mayor Holliday was elected to just believe everything he hears, but he was elected to ask questions and make difficult decisions at difficult times such as these. I believe he stands with the people. I do not believe he's inherently racist. I look at the makeup of the city's staff, leadership, and elected body, and I don't see that we live in an inherently bigoted community. Now, I think the objections to the mayor's comments can only be considered a suppression of speech, and there's too much of that going on right now. This is a time for a dialogue, where we need to be talking to each other about the issues. And I've heard murmurs from a number of people who are not bigoted, who are not racist, who don't rant, but have real concerns about losing their jobs, or being shamed by people they know and consider friends, because they want to have a dialogue about the pains and issues in our community. Now certainly, we've all seen racism. It is bad, and no one stands behind it, I don't think anyone in this room does. We've heard a number of comments about that. But we need to talk about the issue. Everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So could we have Bob LaSalle, please?
No jokes tonight, Mr. LaSalle.
I'm sorry, what was that?
No jokes.
No jokes.
Okay, no jokes.
Bob, it'll be helpful. Bob, you need to pull your mic down so it's closer to your mouth, it'll make it easier. Pull this, pull this down.
Oh, this?
Yeah, just pull it down, there you go.
Okay, how's that? Thank you. My name is Bob LaSalle, and I live in Oregon City. In 2014, I, the raw inexperienced candidate, ran against Mayor Dan Holliday, the seasoned, experienced former city commissioner for the city of Oregon City mayor's position. I lost by a mere 11 percentage points. The people must have known something then, even though you outspent me by a 3 to 1 margin. At that time, you received endorsements from former mayors, public personalities, unions, and many others. You have also been known to refer to politics as a blood sport. Now, some of those same people who endorsed you before are calling for your resignation. On April 5, 2017, a mere two years into your first term, I had an article printed in the Oregon City News that stated facts of the enormous mistakes you were making as the mayor of Oregon City at that time, and asked for your resignation then. Some of those things were walking out of meetings in fits of rage, insulting city or county commissioners, being rude to citizens and public officials in public, and other countless issues. You even missed a meeting with the Boy Scouts. As you can imagine, the recent issues are not a surprise to me. I ask that if you truly love this city as you have stated, that you resign as of this evening, realize you don't have the support of the rest of the Commission, and anything you try to accomplish between now and the end of your term will be eyed with suspicion and not likely to be accepted. Quit now, and quietly go about trying to restore your honor. You proudly refer to your service in the United States Army as a commissioned officer and leader for 24 years in that American institution. I'm saddened every time you make that association, and I caution the Electricians Union in the use of your name. Resign now, and save the city the time, and money, and embarrassment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And the last one under citizen comment is Adam Marle.
Mayor Holliday, members of the city commission, for the record, my name is Adam Marle, and I am a resident of Oregon City. It's been a few weeks since I've seen you all. In the time that elapsed between June 17 and today, a few notable events have happened concerning the recall of Dan Holliday. First, the Committee to Recall Dan Holliday officially formed, composed of a grassroots team of experienced campaigners. Second, the Committee filed a formal petition to recall the mayor. And third, signature gathering has begun and is ahead of schedule. I was asked to be the campaign manager for this effort, and agreed, knowing full well that this would take the place of a paid summer job. For a broke college student, that was a big decision, and that's how much I care about bringing ethical leadership back to the mayor's office. And I'm not alone. We already have nearly 100 activated campaign volunteers from all walks of life. I've personally spoken with many of them, and it's clear we have a dedicated, informed, and powerful volunteer force behind us. And while we are still ramping up our signature gathering efforts, only one week in, we have collected approximately 400 signatures, well over our weekly goal, and double what we needed during our first week. While the COVID-19 pandemic is not an ideal time to lead a campaign such as this, the momentum and the community is on our side. But more importantly, history will be on our side. A week from today, on July 8, we will be holding our official kickoff rally at 6:30 PM in the Willamette Falls Media Center parking lot, with former mayors Neely, Norris, and Williams slated to speak. You are all invited to attend. The rally will be socially distanced, and we are offering drive-through signing stations so people don't even have to leave the comfort of their own car to sign. Recalls are divisive, and I do not take the gravity of this moment lightly. Indeed, it would be easier to wait until the end of the mayor's term to restore ethics and accountability to the mayor's seat. But democracy is never easy, and it will always fail if the people are unwilling to stand up and speak out for good government. About a month ago, Mayor Holliday recited the famous quote from Benjamin Franklin describing the government that the framers had unsettled upon: "A republic, if you can keep it." The actions that the recall campaign are taking is the very manifestation of this timely sentiment. It is not too late for him to resign and avoid further damaging this city, but I realize that course of action is unlikely. City Commissioners, please do the right thing and move to take a vote of no confidence in this man. Mayor Holliday, please do the right thing and resign. I invite the public to join the recall campaign at recalldanholliday.com and on Facebook under the handle @OCRecallDanHolliday. We are a nonpartisan grassroots campaign with supporters and donors from across the political spectrum. Commissioners, I plan to be back at your next regular meeting to keep you updated on our progress. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's all the citizen comments, we have adoption of the agenda next.
Everybody okay with these, you guys?
Mr. Mayor, we'd like to-
I would like to- Go ahead. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Please, I'll defer to Commissioner Lyles Smith, I believe.
Thank you, we'd like to, I'd like to request that we add an agenda item. We'd like to provide an update on the investigation of the mayor. We'd like to read the censure letter and any other related discussion for this topic.
Go ahead.
All right, we're gonna start that now. I guess I will start with an update on the investigation that the city commission requested at our last meeting. We have determined and selected an investigator to begin that work. It will likely begin next week, and so we mainly just wanted to give an update to let folks know that yes, that was moving forward. And it will start as soon as we can get that process underway. Then the second thing is the censure letter. We have crafted the censure letter. I would like to read that letter at this time. It will go into the public record. And then, I'm not sure if there was consensus on all the things that was gonna happen with the letter after that. We responded to you, Mr. Conkell, do you know?
Yes, there was a request to post it on the website, distribute it via social media, distribute it via press release.
Thank you, Mr. Conkell. And part of the reason I wanted to address that as well, because I have had a few folks ask me what was gonna happen with the letter, and the city commission did not provide direction at our last meeting when we did talk about the letter. It was a big night. I think we were ready to end that meeting and end that conversation, and we needed to provide it updates. So that is what will happen with this letter, and I have the letter in front of me that all of the commissioners, we need a couple more signatures, they weren't here for COVID, so therefore we will still get signatures, but I know all of the commissioners have agreed to this letter. Letters dated July 1, 2020. Mayor Holliday. The city commission is the governing body of the city of Oregon City, and the proper functioning of this body is critical for the city to achieve its goals and make the city a better place to live for all. The city commissioners, including the mayor of Oregon City, are civic leaders who must remain above reproach and avoid injuring the good name of the city, disturbing its well-being, and hampering its work. Mayor Holliday, it is apparent to this commission that you have taken the following actions that are contrary to the interests of the proper functioning of the city commission, and bring the name of the city into public reproach. At the June 3, 2020 city commission meeting, you violated the city's rules of procedure by directing the audio visual technician to immediately stop the meeting audio and video feed when you adjourned the commission meeting, an apparent planned effort on your part to exclude additional comments to be made by commissioners on the murder of George Floyd, a matter of local, state, and national importance, and by refusing to recognize commissioners entitled to the floor consistent with the adopted commission agenda. You have made comments on social media and other outlets, and you took actions, including meeting with mayors throughout the region, promoting the reopening of Oregon City in defiance of the emergency orders of the state of Oregon in response to the global COVID-19 pandemic. Your actions resulted in a letter from the Oregon Attorney General reminding you of the need for the state's response to protect its citizens and the authority to do so. Your actions led to concern and confusion in the community for which the city commission held an emergency meeting to clarify that citizens and businesses should not violate the governor's executive orders. Your actions would have potentially endangered the lives of our citizens and potentially exposed businesses that followed your recommendations to criminal and civil penalties. You have made comments on social media regarding the death of black citizens and police encounters, and about the subject of racial injustice, downplaying the significance of the events and the concerns about racial injustice. You were the only mayor in the region who refused to sign the June 4, 2020 letter from the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium regarding the death of George Floyd. The letter from the consortium, signed by the region's 25 other mayors, included an acknowledgement that no community is immune to systemic and historic patterns of racial injustice. The letter committed the cities to listening and advancing meaningful reforms, and that supported the right of citizens to peacefully protest. These actions have cast a shadow on the good name of the city of Oregon City. You have solicited money from local businesses for a fireworks show in Oregon City that would be contrary to the state emergency orders related to COVID-19, with complete disregard to the commission's actions at the previous emergency meeting, where you agreed to uphold the governor's stay-home, save-lives executive order. Additionally, you may have violated Oregon ethics laws and criminal statutes related to official misconduct with your decision to unilaterally collect private funds for a fireworks show without the knowledge or consent of the commission, knowing that a fireworks show would have potentially risked the health and safety of our community. In response to the concerns that the commission have about your actions, the city manager has been authorized by this commission to hire an outside firm to conduct an investigation into the allegations regarding your actions related to: A) promoting the reopening of Oregon City in defiance of the emergency orders of the state of Oregon; and B) raising funds to stage a fireworks event in defiance of the emergency orders of the state of Oregon without the consent or participation of the rest of the commission. The results of this investigation shall be brought back to the city commission and upon request be made available to outside agencies for potential further action. Based on your actions as outlined above, and as discussed and voted on by the Oregon City Commission on June 17, 2020, you are hereby censured by the City Commission of Oregon City for taking actions that injured the good name of the city of Oregon City, disturbed its well-being, and hampered its work. Signed by Rachel Lyles Smith, Commission President, Frank O'Donnell, Commissioner, Denise C. McGriff, Commissioner, and Rocky Smith Jr., Commissioner.
Thank you.
That is all my comments, I think. Commissioner O'Donnell, did you have anything further?
I believe in view of the number of letters we're getting from people like the Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Oregon City Association, the fact that three of four mayors, and I want to compliment Mayor Alice Norris, Mayor Doug, former Mayor Doug Neely, former Mayor John Williams, members of the school board who have individually written to us, prominent citizens, and I'm very complimentary to Mr. Larry Didway, who spoke as a citizen, not as in his official position. I thought it was a very sincere letter. And many students have set forth, I saw Mr. Adam Marle just sit before us and ask this commission to consider a vote of no confidence. And there is, I mean, one must certainly consider, in view of all the disruption we've got, can the mayor continue to effectively lead the city? So I would open that for discussion among my fellow commissioners, and we can decide if we want to pursue a vote of no confidence or not. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you have your hand raised?
Yes. Want to add to Commissioner O'Donnell's comments. You know, we have received many, many letters, many comments from citizens, and I do appreciate them all. I do appreciate Derek's comments tonight, however, listening to that letter shows, this is not just about a couple comments, this is not just about a couple posts. There is a track record here, and a lot of actions taken by the mayor that have not been really addressed by the mayor in any responsible way. That worries me, and it worries me because there has been no acknowledgement that he really has made any mistakes, or has harmed the city, from his own viewpoint. And we now, in the last week or so, have seen the reaction, and the way that this is now actually affecting the city. It's one thing to, you know, kind of point out concerns and issues that have been accumulating over time, but to then see how that's affecting the community, to hear from the Chamber and DOKA both that say this is now affecting businesses in this town, to get a letter from the OCBA saying the same thing, and agreeing with our censure, and all the other people that Commissioner O'Donnell spoke out about and mentioned, but also our state representative, Mark Meek, also saying the same thing. Our mayor is representing us as a city on many, many regional committees, on a lot of regional, in a lot of regional aspects. And the truth is, can we really feel confident in him representing this city, when he has not shown any effort to do so? In fact, even violating his own votes by supporting the letter, our response to the letter of the Attorney General, and enforcing and keeping with the state guidelines, the mayor voted for that, but then continued to take action away from that. You know, it's at a point now where we have lost confidence, and at least I have, as a commissioner, and I know others feel the same way. And if the mayor would apologize, if the mayor would acknowledge that he has harmed the city, if the mayor would resign, all of that would go away. But right now, we only have, going forward, in the next two years, unless there is actually a recall that happens, to try to make progress in this city with a mayor that we don't trust. And I find that to be a very difficult situation to be in.
I don't see anybody else with their hand up.
We don't.
I have a parliamentary question.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Is this the proper place if we, for the reasons stated beforehand by both myself, members of the community, people who have submitted letters, Commissioner Rocky Smith's statements, is this the proper place to make a motion of no confidence in the mayor? Have a vote of no confidence, is this the correct place?
Well, you certainly can do that. You know, I thought we were talking about having an investigator instead of, you know, convicting me before you've got all the facts, but you certainly have the ability to whatever you wish.
We're not trying to convict you, that investigation will be ongoing on the basis of what Commissioner Smith and I have said in letters from the community. The question is, does the community, do we have the confidence that you can continue in your duties as the mayor? So I would call for a vote of no confidence.
We need a second.
Is that a motion?
It is a motion, it would need a second, it would be considered a main motion.
I'll second it. For discussion.
It's been moved by Frank O'Donnell, Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner McGriff. Any discussion?
Verdicting?
Yeah.
No.
It might be helpful to clarify what a vote in favor and a vote against would be. The motion is for a vote of no confidence, so vote in favor would mean that the commission has lost confidence in the mayor. A vote against would be that the commission retains confidence in the mayor moving forward.
Understood.
Yeah, I guess-
Caller?
Hang on, the only comment I do want to make is to address the public comment from Mr. Metzen. I thought that he made a really smart and comment, and I appreciated your comment. I agree with you. We haven't had the conversations about racial injustices in our community. We haven't had conversations about how the executive order is being implemented throughout the state of Oregon. I agree with you that those are conversations that should be had. But the role of this body is to discuss policy, and if at any time the mayor wanted to bring any of those policies to this commission, I would have happily had those conversations, and we could have had those conversations as a body and made some policy decisions whether or not we wanted to send a letter to the governor saying we were unhappy with the inequitable application of the COVID-19- of the COVID-19 rules in Oregon or whatever. I mean, that is a conversation that we can have. And so I just want you to know that I appreciate your comment, and I agree with you. And I think there are a lot of really important conversations that need to happen in our community and amongst our staff about what's going on. And we can make steps forward. And so I just wanted to lead with that. And to clarify what's happening on this commission, I think if you listen to the censure letter and stuff like that, these actions are not about those conversations not happening. These actions are about the actions of the mayor and the actions that the mayor has taken as an individual and representing himself independently as representing the city commission. So those are my personal opinions. Thank you for your public comment. I think you mentioned good things, and we should be having a different dialogue, hopefully on another day. And I would have welcomed those conversations anytime in the last couple of months, but they did not happen.
May I add something to your comment, please?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, may I add something to Rachel Lyle's, Commissioner Lyle Smith's comment?
Commissioner McGriff?
Yes, I wanted to also thank you, Derek, in the face of maybe seeming like your comments were in opposition to people. They are not in opposition. I will tell you that members of this community have already reached out to me personally. We have started individually and in some small groups having those conversations that you're asking about, not particularly about the COVID one, but about the issue of people of color and what's going on with those folks in this community, if there's any issues that have come up. So those things have already happened. And I will say that members of the community that have reached out to me personally, I appreciate it, and I'm willing to have a conversation with just about anybody with regard to those topics. It's not an easy conversation to have, but I think people are understanding what is going on. Some of the people that have reached out to me know me quite well. Two people who've reached out to me don't know me very well at all, but we are neighbors, and called me personally to ask me if I would sit down with them, which I have done. We plan on having other conversations. I have had conversations with members of the, individually with members of the Chamber, members of the, of DOKA, on which I represent the city on that board. So those conversations are happening, maybe not in a way that would be a large group, but they are happening on a smaller group. So I do want you to know that they are happening. I don't feel like I'm being singled out, but I think people truly want to, they're not interested in understanding what my experience is. They're interested in understanding how we can do better in our community, whether something has happened to someone or not. So feel free, as we know each other, if you would like to have a conversation. I'm more than happy to do that. And I agree with Commissioner Lyle Smith that we can have a conversation. We hope at some time where we can get a few more people in the room that we should have those conversations, because I think it's important. We all live here. We all care about this place. If there are some issues, as some of the students pointed out, one of the students testified, brought me to tears because I have not experienced that in my schooling when I was growing up. But if people are experiencing that now, I'm concerned about that. So I just want to thank you for that.
Further discussion?
One more thing.
Commissioner Smith?
If this commission does decide to take a vote of no confidence, I would recommend that that be added to the press release and to all the other documents that would be sent out with the censure letter.
The seconded motion has no problem with that.
Is that a specific motion, or is that included in the motion?
It's included in the motion if the motioner and the seconded says it's okay.
I'm okay with it.
Call or roll?
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Mayor Dan Holliday?
No.
Moving on.
Wait.
So, as it's a motion about the mayor and whether at no confidence, technically, he probably should not have been allowed to vote on it.
Yeah, Robert's Rules of Order says that they cannot vote.
So I think it would be approved four to nothing.
Okay.
I will correct my vote and abstain.
Do we need to have a second roll call, or we're good?
No, I believe the votes were clear.
We can't abstain either.
We're good. All right, moving on. What's next, Ms. Riggs?
We have a general business item 7A. It is the first reading of ordinance number 20-1008, amending chapter 2.30 of the Oregon City Municipal Code. It's the Citizen Involvement Committee, and we'll turn it to Laura Turway.
Thank you very much. Chapter 2.30 of the Oregon City Municipal Code codifies our Citizen Involvement Committee. The CIC members have got together and identified a series of amendments to that code. The commission discussed those codes the last hearing on June 17 and instructed staff to come back with those changes. The changes are before you tonight. I also want to acknowledge that we did receive a comment from Mr. William Gifford, who is, looks like, is on the line. With that, I'm here to answer any questions, and so is our CIC Chair, Bob LaSalle.
Let's go ahead and inform Mr. Gifford.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Okay, William Gifford, I have you unmuted, and it's your turn to speak. You have up to three minutes. If you could begin by stating your first and last name and city of residency for the record.
Hi, this is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. I hope that by now, the commission has received a couple of documents that I submitted to the city recorder. One of them is specifically pertaining to the proposed changes to the ordinance, and another is, another take on what I think could be done to assist the CIC. For those of you who may not know, I have long been a staunch advocate of the Neighborhood Association and the CIC, having served as CIC Secretary, as Neighborhood Association Chair, and Land Use Chairs. I have spent the better part of three years and a lot of political capital working to get Neighborhood Associations reactivated and so on. So I consider myself pretty, pretty well-versed in the workings of those associations. I consider that the proposed changes to the, to the code, I think are probably not in the best interest of things. I mentioned particularly the idea of giving each neighborhood the potential of two votes. In my argumentation, I think that the only people that benefit from that are associations that already have enough participation. If the intent of this is to increase participation, I don't see that this is, I don't see that this is doing it. And I hope that you read the rest of my arguments in there, that I won't take, I won't take your time to reiterate, but I do hope that you have read them. I have given this a lot of thought, that it's just, it should be one neighborhood gets one vote, and just to keep it as straightforward and as transparent as possible. Having two votes has way too many disadvantages. Secondly, is the, and a much more minor point, is the whole idea of the, of the neighborhood, the CIC receiving a reason why a Neighborhood Association nominee would not be, would not be appointed. In my experience, there's only been one time that that's ever happened, and that was because the applicant was currently in litigation against the city. And I can't imagine why the Neighborhood Association even proposed that. But I just don't think that it's significant enough to codify. I think that future, future transactions like that would be, would be explained without putting that in an ordinance. My suggested changes are more to the point, is that the boundaries of the Neighborhood Associations currently are aligned on center lines of streets, which is not the most effective way because it splits neighbors from neighbors on opposite sides of the streets, may very well be, and many of them are, in different Neighborhood Associations. And I gave an example of that. And I think that that could easily be realigned by using addresses rather than, rather than a center line of streets. Also, those boundaries are not in alignment with police department boundaries. The police are allocated by a number of incidents and, and resources, and they do not exactly match back to a Neighborhood Association. There's just some overlap, there's multiple neighborhoods in one police district. It doesn't map back very well, and I don't know why the, those boundaries can't be. The reason why is because the, the reports that are given by the police to the Neighborhood Associations, for which I think that most neighborhoods are very appreciative, are, for all intents and purposes, interesting, but hardly useful. It's not actionable data. The information that's given has no, has no trend lines, it has no context. You don't know if number of incidents per particular type of crime is on the rise or on the decline. I think that I'm trying to keep this under three minutes, but I hope I didn't gloss over too much, and I hope that the, that the city commission has, has taken the opportunity to, to read my, to read my thoughts on that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
And then, Bob LaSalle, I believe, would like to speak. Did you want to speak, Bob? Yeah.
Ms. LaSalle, come on.
This evening was the first time I've seen this communication from Mr. Griffin, and I want to make it clear about the, the two votes per neighborhood have been almost unanimously approved by the Neighborhood Associations the last three times it was brought up in the CIC. So it's, it's obvious that the CIC members themselves have really strongly approved two votes per neighborhood. Let's see. In regard to the mayor notifying his non-appointment, one outcome of that would be that the neighborhoods would not, again, turn right around and select another representative that had the same disqualifications that the mayor had in the previous one. So it would just be notifying the neighborhood why the appointment was not approved, and then they can go ahead and get somebody else in there that would be more appropriate in the opinion of the mayor. Let's see, another one, the boundaries, that would be a good thing. But how, boy, that would be a, quite a, quite a job. But, let's see here. Okay. I've reached out to Mr. Griffin since I became Chair of the CIC to see if he would be interested in coming and joining us again as a member. Of course, he'd have to be selected by his Neighborhood Association. But he offered, as a previous member of the CIC, a huge amount of knowledge, experience, and enthusiasm to help the CIC get where it was. And in my last reaching out to him, he refused. Mainly, one of the reasons he gave was that he disagreed with the two members per Neighborhood Association, as he spoke of this evening. My feeling about this is, if he wants change, then participate. Don't just stand around and bitch. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment, Katie?
Nope, that's it.
All right, then, what's the pleasure of the commission?
I'd like to move the first reading.
I'll second.
Second, further discussion? Hearing non-coloral.
Well, first, the reading, ordinance number 20-1008, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City, amending chapter 2.30 of the Oregon City Municipal Code, Citizen Involvement Committee.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday, may I make a suggestion to the Community Development Director?
About what?
This, just the suggestion about the street thing might be something to look into. I didn't realize some of the neighborhood boundaries split a street with people on either side of the street. I don't think we have that situation in McLaughlin. It clearly goes around for geographic boundary in terms of features, but not any streets. I don't, maybe that's something that's applicable to other neighborhoods. Just maybe take a quick look at it, see if there's any of that going on.
I understand what you're saying, but to be honest, that's a lot of work for those guys that are already.
I didn't say change it, I just said, look at it, see if there's any streets that are split. I don't know if there are.
I'm not comfortable with asking Community Development to take on more work right now, given the other stuff they're doing.
Well, we can ask the other.
Commissioner Smith, do you have something? Call or roll, please.
We already voted. It was a discussion.
It's not a motion.
Oh, sorry.
No, it was, it was not a motion. It was just a suggestion to say if there are any, maybe there is, I don't know.
Ms. Riggs, what's next?
Okay, the next agenda item is general business, general business item 7B. That is the Willamette Falls Legacy Project and Willamette Falls Trust Grant Agreement. And again, it's Director Laura Turway.
Thank you very much. The Willamette Falls Legacy Project includes four project partners, Oregon City, Clackamas County, Metro, and the state. Those partners together formed a nonprofit in 2015, now known as Willamette Falls Trust. A grant agreement is before you tonight, which is a continuation of a previous agreement, as well as the addition of additional acknowledgement of activities that the trust is already performing on behalf of the partners. This agreement is good for one year and includes an opportunity to extend for an additional year. Highlights of the agreement include community engagement. The trust has been giving tours of the site and also doing donor prospecting and other activities. Fundraising, so far, they've raised more than $7 million for the project to date, and this agreement pledges another $5.9 million. Attendance at meetings, they attend our regular staff meetings regarding the project. Design input, this one is new. We felt that it was important that we have someone at the table to represent programming and interpretation opportunities to make sure that when we identify Phase 1 and get down into the details of design, that we're not precluding future opportunities. And also, working with affected tribes to understand how they can be included into the project as well. Another item that is new to this agreement that wasn't in the last agreement includes defining expectations for world-class programming. We've heard from the community ideas of what they would like to have on site, and we need to further define what that means. What is world-class programming? Under the direction of the partners, the trust has already been leading this initial planning effort. This effort also includes identifying potentially design requirements, approaches and recommendations for curating narratives. It does not include details of implementation, like we have been talking about. I recognize that it is, we're having two parallel conversations at the same time with the commission. One about details of who and how we implement programming in the few years that we get there. And then this other one, which is a high-level conversation about what is programming on site. This agreement identifies $50,000 a year. It includes $50,000 for the year that just ended, as well as this one moving forward, and then potentially another one if it's extended a year. Andrew Mason, which is the Executive Director of Willamette Falls Trust, is on the line, as well as, yeah. And we're here to answer any questions.
Mr. Mason?
You bet.
You bet. Am I offering more background? I was, I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to answer whatever questions you may have, um, I, I don't, yeah.
Okay, question for the commission?
Uh, yes, please, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner McGriff?
Um, Ms. Turway, um, thank you for clarifying the specific changes. I, I'm glad that I picked up on all of those, and I just wanted to make sh, I understand from your statements that we have a parallel discussion, as you stated. So we had a discussion previously about, um, who would implement the programming. This is basically still in the discussion stage about the programming in general, but as you said, is a very high level, but it is not in any way engaging into a contract by which we select someone or an entity to manage the programming, whatever that is going to be.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
So, um, my questions are along the same lines. Um, first of all, I want to ask, um, there is a funding gap currently in terms of the Riverwalk construction, correct?
Yes.
And it's like seventeen million or something?
Well, we haven't identified what phase one is at the moment, um, but there's a funding gap.
Okay. Um, so, and then there is a chance, a possible chance with COVID and other situations at the state level that in the future, we could, some of that funding might be, um, could change?
Yes, we're waiting for direction from the partners on that.
Okay. So, here's, here's my concern. Um, and it's the same concern I had a conversation with Laura Turway, uh, 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 our, our last meeting, um, Turway. Um, so, we had two past meetings about Willamette Falls Trust. Um, one was our work session on February fifth, which we talked, you know, was our first real conversation about what this commission feels in terms of programming. And we were pretty clear that at this point, we had no, um, real thoughts about specifically how that would be taking place. For instance, Commissioner, um, McGriff stated that she was not open to handing over management or programming. Um, Commissioner Lyles Smith, um, also mentioned the scale of the, um, the Riverwalk and, and, and how the programming would relate to that, very depending, depending on what, uh, phase or what, um, all, uh, what, um, option we use for the Riverwalk construction. Um, and there was a comment there also about not to default programming to people that we are already involved with. Um, and so there was clear directions kind of there that we weren't really ready to talk too much about details of prog, programming. I mean, we are really willing to talk about it, and we just haven't got there yet. Um, Andrew Mason also mentioned, um, that the trust doesn't do program, um, and that they are probably, um, not the best organization to do that, um, which we've had that conversation as well. My worry is, um, this agreement, which is just about grants, the only difference with this agreement in terms of wording that I can pull out of that, and it's written in there multiple times, the drastic difference with this agreement, uh, versus the old one, which by the way, expired a year ago. So this being put on our consent, consent agenda at the last meeting, and then was said to us at the end of the meeting, when we didn't get to it, that it was an emergency, and that we really should have addressed it that night, which we did not, um, it's an agreement that's been expired for over a year. So if you read the agreement, this current one, and compare it to the original agreement that expired a year ago, the difference is whether or not, um, we are going to allow the trust to receive grants or advocate for grants for programming versus, or as in addition to what the original agreement was, which is funding for the Riverwalk itself. And my point is, if we have a gap already in even building this thing, why are we even thinking about trying to solicit grants and, and, and work towards programming, especially if this is not the group that we've talked about implementing that at some point? The areas here get grayed in that we have Willamette Falls Trust renting office space in our city buildings, that we've already engaged in a certain process with them, that we assign this agreement and give them the go-ahead to start accepting grants on our behalf in terms of viewing programming. We're kind of already going against the concern, which is, um, are we going to already, you know, kind of default to people that are already involved, which is what Commissioner Lyles Smith's concern was. I, I think that, you know, clearly we want to be able to, um, solicit grants, but if we don't even have any real understanding that this, what the Riverwalk's going to look like for one, how we're going to actually pay for it, because we still have a massive gap, we're several years away from even discussing programming. And I understand that delineation here is trying to say that this agreement really is just defining what world-class attraction means. We can do that without programming. We can do that without the, the, the money coming in for programming. I, I, I just think that this was thrown at us, um, on a consent agenda, and then immediately now it's become kind of this focal point that now we have to be worried about, and it expired a year ago. I, I, I think this commission has a lot more conversations yet. Um, there's some of us that are extremely worried, um, with the whole partnership in itself, um, that has been, um, apparently, um, you know, we're getting to the point in this project that we all, we all knew was coming, and that we all really hoped would never happen, which is where we start getting into the place where each of the partners have a different view about where we're going, and the, the possibility of this whole thing starting to unravel. And I think we need to be very careful about how we move forward, especially when, um, we have only two representatives on that, um, uh, from the commission on the, on the, uh, Riverwalk process or, um, legacy project, and, um, at least, um, you know, one of which we have a vote of no confidence in, and one of which said that they had concerns about this item I, I'm talking about tonight, um, which kind of def, goes against what staff told me last week. So I, I, I think this is premature, and I would love to have a, maybe a, another conversation about it before we pass this.
Ms. Rurdon?
Well, first, I'm going to say that I am the, one of the two people that goes to those meetings and just recently attended the last one. I also want to say that I, I truly highly value Willamette Falls Trust's contributions, because they have far exceeded some other partners, namely the county, who I don't even know if they have enough money to come sit at the table. So I'm, I'm, I'm proud of them, but my problem with this agreement is, uh, everything Commissioner Smith said is correct. If you hadn't attended that meeting, it's a public meeting, this project is failing. This project is not defined. There are divergent interests, even as to how to enter the facility, and those interests include huge impacts on the budget, and one of which jumps the budget by seventeen million, which is what Commissioner Smith referred to. The problem with this agreement, and, and there's things in this agreement that you, you just cringe, there's a point where this thing, it doesn't come together, the funds end up, the, the funds raised by Willamette Falls Trust end up getting dispersed to the partners, which I think would be a terrible mistake. So I agree with additional discussion. The problem with this whole proposal tonight is there's so many elements to it, and one of the elements that Commissioner Smith alluded to is the programming. We are so far from programming that I, I'm not prepared to move forward on this tonight, and I would, uh, throw in with Commissioner Rocky Smith that this needs a whole bunch more sit-down discussion, because there's, the problem with this kind of proposal is there's so many individual elements, that if there's even one that you disagree with, you're, you're placed in a position of having to vote no. Thank you.
Commissioner Lyles Smith?
Um, I don't think I have any comments at this point, or questions.
Commissioner McGriff?
Um, yes, I, I want to, um, reiterate my, um, support for the Willamette Falls Trust. I, I do have a great deal of confidence in their ability to help us get here, and I believe that we've had just a minor, it's not really a minor hiccup, but we've had, you know, sort of a slight change of direction, and I think that our partners, uh, the confederated tribes of Grand Ron are, are doing everything they can to help us move forward, although with the current situation with COVID, I think things have, have come to a, to a little bit of a, a crawl. But, um, that, that being said, that does not, um, dissuade my, um, confidence in the Willamette Falls Trust and their staff. I have, recently, they had some, um, participation in a process where we were talking about, um, ideas about programming. I definitely agree with Commissioner Smith about the programming, that's a, to me, that's a separate discussion. What this agreement talks about is keeping the discussion going about programming, and having them bring back ideas to us about how that might happen. I agree that we need a, a separate conversation about programming, and my concern, previously that Commissioner Smith, um, cited, was the fact that I wanted to see a little bit more of a balance in the partnership that we were going to have with regard to programming. I think, in my opinion, I think my concerns about that can be resolved, but to me, that's a separate conversation. I want to see us continue to move forward, I want us to promote the confidence that we have in the process, and the community has a great deal of expectations, and to that end, I had suggested back in April that we even have a minimal sort of groundbreaking, just so we could say we were doing something, and then obviously, in the meantime, we found out that the grant, that the Grand Ron we're trying to get with the EPA did not quite happen, but, you know, we're going to punt and try something else. So I don't have a problem with us, um, moving this forward. Uh, I believe we need to continue to have the agreement with, with them, I think we need to have an agreement with our partners, and I would like to see this move forward, but if we need to have further conversations about the programming, I think we need to do that, but I don't think it should be held up with regard to us having a, a management agreement in terms of how we operate and allowing them to receive funds if that should come to pass. I would like them to continue to be able to do that, and, uh, but I think the other things can be, can be worked out, and even though Commissioner O'Donnell said, well, if you disagree with one part of it, does it torpedo the, the whole thing? I think we have to continue to operate in good faith and move forward with, with this organization that has been partners with us in lockstep. So I, I have every confidence that through our, our city leadership, our city manager, and our other departments that are working with them, that we can, we can move forward with this, I really do, and I think we need to have a little bit of, a little bit of faith that we're going to get there, because we just have, have a long road. I don't want us to stop and then start, because that helps us lose momentum. So that's my comments and support for the grant agreement.
Ms. Fricks, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Okay, so before I ask for a motion, Mr. Mason, do you have any response?
Uh, yes, I, I, uh, thanks for your consideration, um, and, and I, I want to be clear that the I, the, the plan here, um, uh, is, is to craft a, a, a programming plan. That's one of the elements that we have been charged to do by the legacy project, and so we've been working on behalf of the legacy project as a whole in order to do that. Most importantly, because in order to raise money, you know, we have, we talked to donors, and they were very clear and said, we want to know two things. We want to know what's going to happen on day one when we get there, so if we're going to make an investment, we want to know what we're going to do there, and so we're doing our, we're, we're working to answer that question. What will that experience look like? And engage, uh, other, other folks who can help to craft that vision, and what does that mean when we describe a world-class version of that? Uh, absent that, it seems that, you know, we aren't in a position to be able to, to raise a lot of, lot of additional funds, so that's, that's, that's part one. The second thing that, uh, folks ask is, what's it going to look like in fifty years? Um, and, and that's a, that's a story for another day. We don't, we don't have an answer to that one, but those, those were really the two key decisions that we've heard in talking with the philanthropic community. So, um, uh, it is true that COVID has, um, to some degree, to a significant degree, stalled our ability to conduct fundraising, and I think that without a clear programming vision, we will also be in a very restricted ability to, uh, raise funds and tell people, here's what the experience is on the, on the Riverwalk. And so that's a lot of what this, 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 um, agreement is about, working on behalf of all of the, all of the partners.
Ms. Robertson Gardner, are you the lead on this from the seat?
Uh, I support the legacy project, uh, with Laura Turway, but not on this particular item.
All right, thank you. Does, is there a motion?
I still have comments.
We have two comments outstanding, Mayor.
Sorry, I didn't see the screen. Uh, Commissioner Smith?
So, um, I also appreciate the work that Willamette Falls Trust has, has done up to this point on this project. Um, however, um, I don't have the same, um, confidence that Commissioner McGriff has, and here's the reason. Um, the last time, um, well, we had the two meetings that I just spoke about previous, that we had, uh, discussions about Will, Willamette Falls Trust was, um, the, uh, let's see, um, what, February fifth meeting? Um, that meeting was a, was all about programming, um, and as you recall, it was an MOU, I believe, or, or there were, they, they didn't bring a, yeah, MOU to us, but the, the assumption was, at some point, we were going to get towards some sort of an agreement, um, in regards to programming, and it was clear from that meeting that none of us were ready to go there. Um, and I've talked about sidebar meetings before. Sidebar meetings are when staff immediately needs to ask us questions in a separate meeting to a regular meeting, because they have concerns that we're not going to support something. Um, so immediately following this February fifth meeting, I was asked, and I think maybe not the only one, um, as a commissioner, to meet with the Wolf Willamette Falls Trust to answer or to have a conversation about the two-page list of questions that I had for them regarding programming. Um, I had that meeting, um, with Alexis, Andrew, and Mayor, and former man Norris, um, where virtually none of my questions were answered, um, including whether or not, um, we were charging rent for office facilities per the city, which I still never got an answer to from the city manager or Willamette Falls Trust. I've found out that we do rent office space to them, I think for a dollar, and they are now current on their payments, which they were not, um, in the past. Um, so my point here is this, we now don't hear anything until now about Willamette Falls Trust in, in the sense that they wanted to come to us, and we had assumed they were going to come to us with an MOU pretty quickly. That never happened. Um, or, and, and so now we're coming to this piece where we have this other agreement that kind of, you know, you know, mentions programming now for the first time, and says it simply in, in their letter, or, excuse me, in this agreement, this one sentence, um, stands out as among other sentences, but "The public partners authorize, authorize Willamette Falls Trust to lead initial planning for active programming of the Riverwalk for the legacy project." That, right there, and we can debate whether what initial means, but right now, without initial being defined, that says, "We are authorizing them, as Willamette Falls Trust, to kind of take the first step in initial planning of programming." Okay? Now, we can debate whether or not that's in the future programming or what, but Andrew just stated, people want to know, what does this site look like on day one? Well, if we give Willamette Falls Trust the authorization to take the initial planning step in what, determining what the scope of world-class attraction is, and we are, um, we are authorizing them to speak on our behalf about what it's going to look like on day one, there is some assumption there to anyone they talk to, that Willamette Falls Trust is going to be involved with it on day one, because they're the ones talking about it and representing it. Um, and so how we are boring this here is the first way to get your foot in the door to an agreement, um, which we haven't even talked about in terms of programming. I think, um, we have a lot more to talk about, and I, I, I just don't think we're there yet. The fact that this was just thrown on the consent agenda. The fact that this was just thrown on the consent agenda last meeting, and now has created all this conversation, I think just kind of proves my point even more.
Ms. Roseon.
I admire Commissioner McGriff's optimistic outlook, but I was at the last meeting and I don't see how we can proceed with this. I mean, quite honestly, the partners are not even in agreement as to how people are going to enter the facility. And one, the part preferred by the tribe entails a $17 million addition for a bridge. We were cautioned by Mark Meek that we could potentially lose our $10 million plus the interest that's gained if the state chooses to revert it back because of our fiscal problems. I'm even curious about the Willamette Falls Trust itself because their $5.9 million they've raised shows up in parentheses. So maybe they've got some concerns also. So I think, quite honestly, I think what this needs is more discussion. I think it's premature because how can we fashion a program when we don't even know what we're going to do as far as our entrance? So I'm going to, my comments would just reflect Commissioner Smith's comments, I'm sorry to say. Again, I'll say I do value Willamette Falls Trust. They're a great partner, but let's define what we want to do and let's make some steps before we lose the whole ball of wax. Thanks.
Ms. Lyle Smith, do you have any points now?
Yes, so my first question is, why has it taken a year to come back with an agreement? And then I assume the same agreement is being circulated by all of the partners? Is it that everybody's, the intent is for all of the partners to sign the same agreement?
Yes, it is the intent for every, all the other partners to sign. Thus far, the county has signed, the trust has signed, and it's in the process of being signed by Metro. It's true, the agreement lapsed last summer. We were getting ready to bring it back in December-ish of this year. And with, we decided to focus a little bit more on what would happen with Phase 1. As you know, a new partner, or the site was purchased by the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron. And so we were focusing on working with them. The partners allowed us to work with them to identify an alternative approach. And so we were focused all our energy on that rather than on this agreement. What was your other question again?
Those were my questions. So thank you, Ms. Turway. So I guess where I'm at is, well, first, I believe the Willamette Falls Trust has operated for the last year on a good faith continuation of what they've been doing in the past. And so I'm challenged with us either not knowing that the agreement expired or, and with the issue that there's work that was performed and they haven't been compensated for that. So that's one piece of this agreement. And I'm not talking about the work they're going to do that I think that we should settle up. And, you know, they were operating in good faith and continuance and working with the partners. And they have continued to do, to work on this project. And therefore, I think they should be compensated for that year's worth of work. Regarding the set, this year that we're in right now, which is talking about the scope of what they are going to do, which has been the majority of this conversation that we've had tonight about what they're going to work on. I agree with Commissioner McGriff that I think they're making good steps, good progress in good faith. They're trying to work this through. I think it is on a little bit shaky ground and it's unstable. But I do understand that in order to raise funds for a project, you have to have a plan, you have to be able to sell something. And at some point, it has to be, to get big money, I think it takes more than just selling the falls, unfortunately. I think programming is part of that. And so I understand that, that thought process or that, you know, when they're out trying to collect funds for this project and if they don't have an answer, when folks are asking them, "Well, what's the plan and what's going to be there? And what are people going to do? Why should I give you a couple million dollars if you have no plan for this, you know, landmark, huge, you know, world-famous site, but you have nothing to offer? You have no, nothing other than people are going to look at the fall?" So I could see where that would be a struggle to have that conversation and to do the work that they've been charged to do. So I would be supportive of this agreement. My only comment is, it's on a very short, thin, thin layer of ice. Like, we need to see some movement. I think there is a lot of concern about the new owners of the project and being able to collaborate and work and move the project forward. Our community needs to see that the project is moving forward. I think we're trying to be as patient as possible. But this, this thin ice that we're walking on of things being unsettled can only last for so long. And I know this agreement says that it can be extended for two more years at yearly increments. I would just say that if, if we don't make good progress in this next year, the chances of this agreement getting extended another year is probably unlikely. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. So I'll make my comments now. Mr. Mason and his group have done an admirable job. They've raised more money than, you know, anybody private group has ever raised in Oregon City. I think that it's a scary thing when you talk about marketing something. Marketing takes skill and practice and needs some substance. And while I agree with Commissioner Smith and Commissioner O'Donnell that maybe this is a tad bit early, the fact is, is that when you're selling a high-rise condo or a theme park, you have to have shown some creativity to get it to the point where you could actually build it. And the fact is, is that, you know, this whole COVID thing has changed everybody's lives, every project's possibilities. The fact is that the falls are still there and something is going to happen. We have an easement. We have all that stuff. So, you know, as much as all these people love to plan stuff, and you know how I feel about master plans and all that kind of thing, I think it's dangerous for us not to at least consider the fact that preliminary planning is not a final plan by any stretch of the imagination. And so to allow these folks to continue to work on preliminary programming is not a huge issue for me. So I tend to support the agreement for this year or for the year that we're talking about. And we could talk about it another year and see where things go. I have a concern that there is some question about whether the Confederate Tribes, the Grand Ron, are partners in this because they definitely are. I've spoken with the both tribal chairwomen. And, you know, they want this project to be successful just like we do. So, you know, I don't think delaying this is a great idea, but I'll hear whatever motion somebody wants to make.
I'd like to make a motion.
Ms. McGriff.
I'd like to move that we approve the Willamette Falls Legacy Project and Willamette Falls Trust Grant Agreement for the period of one year as specified in the document. And that we move forward with trying to have further discussions, even though our plate is really full. I think this is a discussion that we need to figure out somehow to get going again.
I'll second.
Question, I have a question.
Commissioner Smith.
In the wording of this agreement, does it, what I don't want to have happen is this agreement being voted in for a year and then that expires and we don't hear about it for another year. So I want to make some assurance that there's an end date to this where we, where it comes to us or it's null and void on that day.
Would it be acceptable if we get a report from the trust 90 days prior to the expiration date?
If we can rely on that.
Mr. Mason, would you have a problem with that?
Nope, we'll submit, I mean, we're submitting, we will submit a quarterly report along with it on a quarterly basis written and happy to present it anytime that y'all want to have us or doing work sessions with the commission.
Can you make a comment?
Mr., one second. Mr. Koka, would it be possible to insert that little line into the agreement tonight?
So I would just caution that most of the other parties have signed the agreement, but I will read from the agreement, which it says, "The term of this agreement may be extended." So it says the term is actually one year. "The term of this agreement may be extended for one-year period by written agreement between all parties." So there is a written agreement.
I think that term, Mr. Mayor, I think that term would allow us to, and with your direction tonight, we will take on that responsibility in our discussion with Mr. Mason for the quarterly updates, that we do have to bring this back for, you know, written agreement. I think staff and myself understand exactly where this commission is coming from in wanting more information and updates and discussion about this.
And it expires.
Yeah.
There is an expiration date of June 30th, 2021.
Right, without written agreement.
Without written agreement.
Commissioner Smith, does that satisfy your question?
Well, not really because have they been acting with this agree, the past agreement in effect since it expired?
Well, we're not talking about past, we're talking about future.
I mean, if we're saying that they are, they are, they are working in good faith, the fact is that the last time we signed an agreement, they waited a year after it expired to come and talk about it. So then we're going to now assume that we're going to give them the benefit of the doubt and they're going to come and do that at the end of next year? It doesn't behoove them to do that. It behooves them to keep doing what they're doing and not say anything and then say, "Oh, by the way, now we forgot about it a year later." I, I, I just, I think unless it's in there, it means nothing.
Commissioner Smith, it takes two to tango.
Hang on. So the point is, is that the partners group gets regular updates from the trust. Commissioner O'Donnell is one of those folks who attends those meetings, as I do. And every commissioner here has the opportunity to attend those meetings as well. But the fact is, is that if we say, and Mr. Mason has agreed, that they're going to give us quarterly updates, I think that satisfies your objection.
Well, I'll point out that Commissioner O'Donnell is against this. And if he's one of our representatives, that's poignant. And also, I believe if staff can find out, is it true that Willamette Falls Trust was behind in their rent?
They were behind in their rent? Yes, and now they're up to date.
They were behind in their rent. So not only were they behind in their rent, they were also waited a year later. So I don't know how we think that this is like, you know, we're just going to take their word for it.
Commissioner O'Donnell, you got any for us?
I guess all I say is I'm uncomfortable with the details. I would prefer we had additional conversation and got more specific on it before I could support it. And I'm sorry I'm placed in that position, but that's the position I'm in, so.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
Hearing non-call roll, please.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
No.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
No.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Yes.
Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye, motion carries, move on.
The next agenda item is general business item 7C, and that is the Resolution 20-05, modifications of the Planning Division Fee Schedule. And that is Laura Turway.
Thank you very much. I'm introducing Christina Robertson Gardner, Senior Planner with the City.
Thank you, Laura Turway. Mayor Commissioners, I have a short, four-slide presentation this evening about the fees, and I'll let Katie start that. Thank you. So this is the Parks Acquisition Interim Development Fee for Non-Residential Development within the Thimble Creek Beaver Creek Park Place Concept, excuse me, Beaver Creek Concept Plan. So just some of the fee proposal process of how we got here this evening. The Parks and Rec Advisory Committee and Planning Commission directed staff that non-residential development should contribute to the acquisition interim development of park spaces above and beyond the required Parks SDC. They felt that employees of Thimble Creek businesses will have access to nearby parks. Staff pursued a simple and straightforward fee for non-residential park acquisition and interim improvements because it provided the most transparency for the development community. The fee is set for $1,000 for each new 5,000 square feet of non-residential development. This is exclusively for acquisition interim development of parks and open spaces within Thimble Creek. And the fee was referenced in the legislative file in the Red Line Code amendments starting in the fall of 2019, included in the staff report and presentation to the City Commission. And really, it's part of the larger Thimble Creek adoption package but was separated as an agenda item because it is adopted as a fee resolution. Next slide. There was some question about how this fee related to system development fees for parks. I had Assistant City Engineer Josh Wheeler put together a estimated fee for potential future projects. So what you see in the above table are estimated fees for a 5,000-square-foot building on two vacant acres. So you see kind of different, we looked at three different use criteria that would be, might be in the employment areas. And the Thimble Creek Non-Residential Parks Acquisition Interim Development Fee is, would be $10,000 for that same $50,000 square feet. So that would be added on to the Parks SDC when the applicant came in for development. Next slide. This evening, I wanted to provide comment, there are two comments from James Nacita in your packet as well as a memorandum submitted by Bill Kabizman, our city attorney, Wyatt Parno, our finance director, and Bill Kabizman are available to answer your questions about those issues this evening. And the last slide. What I see options for the City Commission this evening, you can approve the resolution with the existing fee structure as proposed by staff. You can modify the resolution with a revised fee structure. You can deny the resolution and provide direction that you do not want to see a fee for non-residential park acquisition interim development in the concept plan area. Or you could continue this file to a future date and provide further direction to staff. So I'm available to answer any questions. So is Mr. Parno and Mr. Kabizman.
Ms. Kabizman.
Thank you, yeah. My memorandum was relatively short response to specific issues that were raised by the public comment. I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise I think it speaks for itself.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I'm curious if our economic development coordinator, James Graham, is here. I know it seems like our city is based on fee bases. And does he feel this will impact his ability to attract commercial businesses to this development if he's available?
Mr. Graham.
Thank you for, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I am concerned about the fee and its ability to attract the development at this time. I think it's probably worth having further discussion, but to enact the fee at this point, it would be difficult to attract.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Commissioner Lyle Smith.
Thank you. So the reason this is on the agenda was because it was on the consent agenda at our last meeting. And it was one that I felt like the commission needed to discuss. Or I had reservations on it and I wanted to hear the discussion and input from our other commissioners at the DIES. My reservations are probably in the same vein of where Commissioner O'Donnell was going with asking Mr. Graham about economic development. I've since confirmed, so all of these businesses are already paying SDCs. And I couldn't figure out, why are we calling out these businesses and asking them to add on an additional fee? If our SDCs are insufficient, then we should be doing an evaluation of our SDCs. And I believe that is coming. But maybe it's only coming for part of our SDCs and not going to consider parks. So I don't know if you, do you know?
Christina Robertson Gardner can answer that for you.
Christina, do you know? Christina, do you know?
About future Parks SDCs?
Yeah.
As a project?
Are they, is the evaluation that I believe is coming of, on SDCs, including Parks SDCs?
Well, that would be a future project, um, by, um, our, our new Parks, uh, Director. Um, this was looking at interim development and acquisition, which, um, and the idea that if, if development happened, um, sooner before the Parks SDCs were, uh, analyzed, that we, we made sure that we had, um, the ability to, to acquire the property we needed, so this was, um, looked at for that.
So-
And it was specific for this area, whereas SDCs are generally looked at citywide.
Right. So, you know, I, I think Park SDCs funds are probably one of the only funds that we actually have available to us, and, and we don't, we don't spend a lot of Park SDC funds on acquisition of parks, so I would think, and Mr. Parno, I believe, is still on the line, I mean, I, I feel like that fund is pretty healthy, and we're not, we're not buying up parkland all over the place, so I'm not concerned, I'm, I'm surprised we're calling out these businesses in this area to pay an additional fee, and I just have a little heartburn over that, um, so. Mr. Parno, did you have anything else to add on the SDC funds?
Thank you, Commissioner President Lyle-Smith, Mayor and City Commissioners, I, I don't know that I have anything additional to add to that, just, uh, looking at it practically in terms of the reserve funds that we have in the SDCs, it's true that there is a large demand across the city for those funds, even though we haven't tapped into them directly in recently, there is a need to have additional SDCs for parks to cover the whole city, um, that's, that's not for me to say in terms of policy whether this, these fees are appropriate or not, but, but I don't, but we're not, we're not flush with cash in that, in that area. And the other thing I wanted to comment on was just that, um, you know, there is another process that we've talked about before, which is, we can have a, a area-specific SDC and so on and so forth, I think that speaks to your question about, what's the inner tie between this fee and the Parks SDCs and so forth, and I get a sense from the commission of wanting to have a better understanding of that, and I appreciate that, I think those are my only comments.
Commissioner O'Donnell, do you have your hand raised?
I do.
Go ahead, sir.
I actually concur with Commissioner Rachel Lyle-Smith, I mean, let's face it, we are trying to attract real businesses, not cottage industries, businesses, so for every acre of a manufacturing facility, we're going to add $40,000 to their cost, if they even build a four-acre facility, it's 160, if they build six, it's a quarter of a million dollars. I don't want to get in the way of attracting jobs to this community, I think the reevaluation of those SDCs, I, I, I think this is a poor substitute for other things that could be done and should be discussed, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I add a comment, please?
Commissioner McGee?
Um, I think at, because of the situation we're in with, with the economy, I guess I would like to suggest that maybe we bring this back, where we'd look at a sp- a site, a area-specific SDC to collect the SDCs for the Trimble Creek area, and that they stay in the Trimble Creek area, I'd rather see that than, um, a general, a new general fee when, right now, we're not sure people can really even cover these. I support us getting acquisition for parks in this area, because obviously I have a great deal of, of concern about some of those natural areas being, um, removed, so is there a way that we could, could backtrack a little bit and look at a, uh, a preliminary amendment to our SDC, so any SDCs collected in this area could just go there for parks? Would that be a way, as you, as was, as was suggested, would that be a way to, um, not have this fee?
Ms. Turway, Ms. Robertson Gardner?
Uh, I, I, I can't speak to that particularly, because I know there's a larger question about, um, you know, when, when, uh, you put aside money specifically for SDCs for an area, but you want to use it for another area because you have a grant opportunity, but you're constrained, so I know, I've heard a lot of times with economists saying, "Be careful when you put all your, your money in all the lots of different pots," that sometimes you lose out on opportunities with grants. Uh, one option could be, um, this fee could be, this discussion could be continued for another meeting, uh, we do have a fee referenced in, uh, the code, in the code amendments, that there, there is a fee, if no fee is adopted this evening, the fee is zero, uh, so there could have a larger conversation about what is the right fee or what fee could be adopted, um, at this time, if the fee isn't adopted, we wouldn't collect any money.
So, Ms. Parno?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and City Commissioners, I appreciate Commissioner McGriff's, uh, suggestion, I thought that was a good one too, but, um, I, I think that, that, you know, the, the issue that was raised by Commissioner O'Donnell and some of the other commissioners about is a fee appropriate and needed in this area, and what impact would that have on economic development, is one thing, whether or not you collected a fee based on SDCs or a fee structure, I, I think is probably a little less relevant, because one might be more complicated than the other, so, um, I, I guess I just wanted to say that I wasn't necessarily advocating for a area-specific SDC, uh, before answering the question of, are those fees appropriate in the area to accomplish what you want to achieve? Hope that makes sense.
Further discussion?
I, I, I would just say, I'm just not in favor of adding on an additional fee to businesses when we're, we're really concerned in trying to get businesses into that area, um, I just would prefer to leave the fee at zero.
I, I like the idea, the concept of getting more parks in the area, but I'm not ready to impose a fee on that area as, as, as well, I just, I, under other circumstances-
Is there a motion?
Um, Mr. Kabizman, may I ask for some advice?
Yes.
So if we don't want to adopt it, do we just leave it, or do we need to make a motion saying that we, we don't-
No.
We don't support adoption of this fee?
Um, you can move to table it, you can move to deny the resolution, um, yeah, you, you can take a number of different actions, the question is, in my mind is, do you want to put an end to this and not have the topic come back to you, or do you want to continue a discussion?
I think my-
Can I make a suggestion?
Um?
I would suggest that we table this until, uh, January 2021.
What's the significance of January 2021?
I, I, I guess, Mr. Mayor, if we were going to table it, I don't want to make it a date certain, I think I would like to suggest that if we table, that we ask staff to maybe come up with a, another option that might achieve the same goal without charging an additional fee to people, I just, I'm not, I'm just not comfortable at this time. The economy was a little different, maybe, but I just, I don't feel comfortable now im- implementing this, I lo- I like the, I want more parks in that area, but I don't want to put more money, more fees on people right now.
You know, and, and maybe you don't even need-
I understand, and, and the point I was making is that, you know, let's get through this year, figure out what's, you know, there are a lot of things that are going to happen in the next few months, we table it until 2021, not Jan- January, just 2021, let staff come back to us if they think they still need to have this fee.
I'm just going to make a motion to table.
I believe it.
Motion, there's a motion, is there a second?
Which motion?
What was the motion? Because I made a concurrent motion to deny. Commissioner O'Donnell made a motion to deny.
Okay, and Denise, uh, Commissioner McGriff also made a motion at the same exact time to table it.
So if one of the motions, uh, acquires a second, that would be the motion on the table?
A motion to table basically takes precedent over a motion to deny, if there's a second.
We need a second for anything?
I'll second Commissioner O'Donnell's motion.
Move and second, and further discussion?
Is, is there a second for Commissioner McGriff's, uh, motion?
Apparently not.
Too late, it's on the floor already, move and second, move on.
Okay, it was-
Call her all, please.
Okay.
Clarify the question for everyone, please.
Uh, Commissioner-
We have moved to deny this.
This resolution.
Yeah, it was moved and seconded into deny Resolution Number 20-05, modification of the planning fee schedule. Commissioner Rachel Lyle-Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
No.
And commi- or Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye, so before we move on, um, I, in recognizing the fact that I'm not there, does folks in the chamber want to take a 10-minute break?
Five.
Okay, well, five will become 10, so we'll come back at, uh, 9:10.
Okay.
I, I think, I think that's too long, 9:10 is too long, we need a five-minute break, if I may request that.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, about nine o'clock.
Well, it's 8:58 now.
Fifty-three.
Eight fifty-three.
Eight fifty-three, we can come back at nine, not 9:10. Okay.
Nine o'clock.
Ms. Briggs, are you ready?
Sorry, I muted myself, I was talking to you while I was muted, I'm so sorry, um, yes, we are ready now, can you hear me now?
Uh, call to me back to order, what's next?
Um, so, the next agenda item is general business 7D, that is Resolution Number 20-22, to allow temporary parklets in the right-of-way and temporary outdoor dining and retail in private parking lots, and that is Tony Conkle.
If the commission would be, uh, amenable, given the time tonight already, and the interest in, um, the waterward park discussion, would you be interested in moving that up to this agenda item now?
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
Do, do waterboard park.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine with that. Although I can make a motion really quick on 7E and get that out of there.
I'm fine either way.
Yeah, let's move it.
I'm fine either way, too.
All right, then let's move waterward park up, and, um, whoever's taking that one, let's do it, and we'll move on.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, evening Commissioners, this is the Public Works Upper Yard Charter Park Discussion, um, staff is requesting direction from the commission on how to proceed with the designation of the Public Works Upper Yard as a charter park. The commission requested that staff prepare the estimated value of the Upper Yard, tax lot 1700 in the armory building, which is estimated at $2.45 million. A potential boundary of a charter park has been included, which includes the property lines for the armory building, tax lot 1700, and the Upper Yard, which is tax lot 500. The boundary at the Upper Yard would be approximately one to two feet behind the cliff edge at the top of the bluff. To bring forward in order in designating the Upper Yard area as a charter park, staff has proposed hiring a consultant to complete a lotline adjustment or minor partition of tax lot 500. Staff has requested direction on the disposition of tax lot 1700 and the timing of adopting the armory building tax lot as a charter park. Um, in the staff report, I did include our previous, uh, commission discussions, um, related to, you know, clarifying that, uh, the two Adair buildings, uh, would be demolished as part of this process, I would need to advertise, uh, that, that process for anybody who would like to take those buildings, we would enter into a contract for that demolition, so we'd have to do the RFP for that, that we would, um, uh, document, uh, the two buildings, um, and archive that information, uh, appropriately, um, the one, uh, outstanding item was, uh, tax lot 1700, just a reminder that some of these properties were purchased with utility funds, tax lot 1700, which is on the Upper Yard, it was the small tax lot that used to be a single-family house, was purchased with utility funds, that, if that's going to be, um, made into a park, it would be appropriate for the, uh, the utility funds to be repaid for the value of that property. Um, the estimate is, is an estimate, so I received a, um, a, uh, a broker's opinion of value, so this is not an appraisal, and it included assumptions, uh, for demolition costs, infrastructures, this is really just to give us a ballpark of when we're talking about, one of the questions was, what would be the value of this property, um, when we're thinking about making it into a park or not, it was my understanding of that question, so once again, this is an estimate, we did not do engineering, it's basalt up there, but it's, it does give us a, a general ballpark of what that value would look like, um, and then, um, and then really, the, you know, we had a discussion about, the armory building has been demolished at this point, um, we need to engage them about when that transfer of property back to the city, which was the reversionary clause, when it was, um, sold to the, um, the army, uh, that it would revert back if it stopped using an armory, and, and how do we want to work that timing, um, and potentially it could be a, a moot issue, um, if it, by the time we get done with a partition or lotline adjustment, demolish the buildings, um, we may have ownership at that point, um, it, but really it was a timing issue, um, and we didn't know when that demolition was going to be completed when we had our last discussion. Um, so, but we've had several conversations on this property, um, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions, uh, that the commission may have.
Um, may I ask a question, please? We don't have, we don't have, uh-
Ms. Briggs?
We don't have arrows.
Ms. Briggs?
Uh, yes, sir.
Ms. Briggs?
Yes, sir.
Is there any, is there any public comment?
There is public comment, yes, um, would you like to begin with that?
How many do we have?
We have two.
How many do we have?
Two.
A video.
I have a, I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes, um, Mr. Mr. Conkle, I did note that in the, I'm holding up, uh, the colored map, that there was a portion, um, that was left off, and I will hand this to you, so do you see my highlighted yellow, that is at the top of the bluff, that was somehow excluded? Can you see, I don't know if you can see it, I highlighted it in yellow, it's a little squiggly line around that piece, that's still, that's on, that's up on the top.
Commissioner, is that the submittal by, uh, Jesse Bus?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I don't know, I haven't seen Mr. Bus's submittal.
Oh, look at, look at Jesse Bus's, uh, public comment document.
It's on your dais, uh, the computer.
No, it's part of the, the, the yard, it just got left off of your blue line there.
Oh, so it follows the cliff.
Yeah, yeah, it follows the cliff, yeah.
I think that's in Jesse Bus's-
Oh, okay, yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen that.
Yeah.
But I'll swip- flip over and look at it, because I, I did not see that.
Hey, Ms. Briggs, uh, I saw at least one comment where, uh, they asked the, I think it was Mayor Neely who asked to have his, uh, comment read into record, is there another one besides that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I missed, um, the reading, you said that you saw Doug, um, Doug Neely asked his to be read into the record?
Yes.
Um, I don't recall if any others, uh, asked that, but I did want to mention that there were several submittals, um, for this agenda item.
No, I understand that, but the mayor asked that his, his letter be read into the record, and I'm asking you to do that now.
I, I got it, Katie.
Okay, thanks.
To the City Commission of, uh, to the City of Oregon City City Commission, Doug Neely, Oregon City resident and PrAC member, designation of Public Works Upper Yard as a park, Agenda Item 7G, uh, City of Oregon City Commission Meeting of June 30th, 2020. Uh, in your previous discussion about the recommendation from Pat to have the Public Works Upper Yard designated as a park, the concern was raised about the estimated $22 to $24 million projected needs for parks and recreation not covered under current funding. That figure was presented to a joint meeting of the City Commission and the PrAC approximately two years ago. While the PrAC was aware of substantial deferred maintenance, it had not heard of the estimated cost until that meeting, nor has a list of what would be covered under the additional funding been presented to PrAC. I agree that this cost is a major issue, and this should be fut- this should be a future topic of discussion at PrAC, followed by another joint meeting between PrAC and the City Commission. However, this funding issue should not be the basis of rejecting the Upper Yard designation. In the time that I've lived in Oregon City, there have been several city park acquisitions that have had several years of delay between the times of acquisition and times of the planning of those parks, among them are Wesley Lynn Park, Tyrone S. Woods Park, which has just had its groundbreaking event, and a park currently referred to as Filbert Run, for which a planning grant is being sought. I suggest that the City Commission indicate its support of a park designation of Public Works Upper Yard and defer the decision of transfer or purchase of the land until a later time, followed by community input as it is pl- as to its planned use. That completes the letter.
Thank you, so, let's take the other public comment.
So, the first one is Jesse Bus- So the first one is Jesse Bus, and he is on via phone, so I will go ahead and unmute his phone now. If he could begin by stating his first and last name and city of residency for the record, and he has up to three minutes.
Hello, this is Jesse Bus. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I am a resident of Oregon City. You all know my position on this proposal. I support it. And I'm personally thrilled that the Commission appears to be on the brink of making history by permanently protecting these additional 5 acres as parkland. But it's not just me. The groundswell of public support for this proposal has been impressive. The last time the Commission discussed these charter park protections, the Commission received nearly 50 comments from citizens throughout Oregon City. Those people use and value Waterboard Park, including these 5 acres. Going back further, in just the past few years, hundreds of residents have commented and participated in efforts to protect this land for open space and recreation. The community cares deeply about this land. But the events of the past five years aren't what make this a historic moment. This is a historic moment because you have the opportunity to stop, once and for all, a cycle that has repeated itself multiple times over the past 110 years. In that time, it's been a push-pull situation over and over again. Is it a park? Is it not a park? Should the city sell the land to private developers, or should it be recreational space? We are caught in a cycle. During World War I, the Waterboard got close to selling the land for private development. But after a public outcry, the City Commission instructed the Waterboard to keep the land as a park. In the following years, the land continued to be improved and used as a park. Then again, in the World War II and post-World War II years, this area was developed with non-park buildings, and the recreational vision for the site got off track. So then again, in the 1950s, the public demanded the land to be, quote, reclaimed as parkland, and the Planning Commission and City Commission approved a Parks Master Plan for these acres. From lack of funding, though, the master plan was never built out. Then the slow encroachment of the Public Works Department started, and you already know that history well. But my point is that we've been in a push-pull cycle on this property for 110 years, and you now have a chance to stop that cycle for good. If you designate this land as charter parkland, never again will the citizens have to reclaim this land for park use. It will stay that way forever. To honor her 1917 efforts to preserve Waterboard Park, I will quote Mrs. JW Norris, a member of the Oregon City Women's Club. In testifying at a Commission meeting just like this one in 1917, Mrs. Norris asked a simple question, and I quote, "Why do we have to beg and beg for a thing of which we may well be proud? Please end the cycle and preserve these 5 acres as permanent parkland." Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Who's next?
Next is Cameron McCready.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me the five minutes offered as Chair of the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. Rather than try and bring people here to testify, I thought we'd bring you to them, so we prepared a 5-minute video for you.
Just take a second.
Middle bottom.
Yes, sorry.
In 1910, the Board of Water purchased this land for the purpose of building an enormous reservoir and city park. The plans for the reservoir changed, and instead, the Waterboard called the land its 13-and-a-half-acre park, set aside for park purposes, for the use and benefit of the youth of Oregon City.
Hi, I'm Mike Mitchell, and I'm a resident of the Caulfield Neighborhood. I encourage your support of the resolution to designate the Upper Yard portion of the Public Works Yard as part of Waterboard Park. I voted for that two years ago as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. I supported it then, and I support it now. We just have so few opportunities to add parkland that we'll need in the future for our city.
Hi, my name is Jackie Hemmer Williams, and I've lived in the Oregon City Park Place Neighborhood for 30 years. I'm the founder of the Oregon City Farmers Market, and I really would like to see the City of Oregon City give charter protection to Lower Waterboard Park. It's a unique and marvelous area, and I can see it would be a great place to have community gardens and be a community gathering space.
By 1921, improving Waterboard Park was part of the official city budget, and in 1931, the city was employing five people to improve and maintain the park.
Hello, I'm Ed Lindquist. I'm an Oregon City resident that lives next to Waterboard Park on the Upper Side. I'm concerned about the park and where it goes and what happens to it. Because once it's gone, I can tell you, after having been a county commissioner for 14 years and doing whatever we could to preserve ground for parks, that's a diamond in the rough. So if that Upper Yard could be added to the park, I think it would be a very positive thing for the parks of Oregon City.
In 1935, the city commissioned a survey of the boundaries of Waterboard Park, which was recorded with the county. In 1939, City Manager J.L. Franzen described Waterboard Park as one of the only large parks owned by the city.
Hello, Roger Fowler Tyes, President of the Oregon City Parks Foundation, a stakeholder here in Waterboard Park. On behalf of our membership, we fully support adding Lower Waterboard, also known as the Upper Yard, into the Waterboard Park boundaries.
I'm Doug Neely. I'm a resident of the Wesley Farms Neighborhood. I'm the former Mayor of Oregon City, and I'm currently serving on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Two years ago, that committee voted to recommend to the City Commission that the Upper Yard of the Public Works be included as part of Waterboard Park. This year earlier, we went ahead and reaffirmed that effort.
Although brush was cleared and graded for a double tennis court and ground selected for a possible ball diamond, the project was put on hold due to the war effort.
Hi, my name is Derek Kramer, and I am a teacher at Gardner Middle School. I believe that the lower part of Waterboard Park should be officially recognized as park space. Our parklands are essential for all of us, especially children, for all of our health and well-being.
Hi, I'm Jerry Herman, President of Rivers of Life Center, a youth education and training organization. Waterboard Park and the flat below it are two seamless elements of what could be Oregon's geologically significant park. The lands were scattered by S.H. floods. It's time to tell the story at one side.
After World War II, the city resumed efforts to develop the park. This resulted in the 1952 Master Plan, which included tennis courts, outdoor theater, recreation center, picnic areas, open spaces, and parking. Acknowledging that World War II-related buildings have been built on the flat area of the park, the 1952 plan declared that every effort should be made to clear the lower flat ground at the end of John Adams Street so that the several acres of Central Park area may be reclaimed and put to vital, permanent use as park and recreation center. Here and now, much like in 1952, the community is ready to reclaim the lower area of Waterboard Park.
I'm Alice Norris, former Mayor of Oregon City. Parks are important to our growing community, so let's preserve Waterboard Park, and especially that lower area, and get those boundaries secured and in the charter.
Okay, who's next?
Uh, we have Betty Mum. Sorry, there was one late coming.
Commissioner Mum.
Hello, Betty Mum, Oregon City. My disclaimer is, I live with the mayor. He does not speak for me. I do not speak for him. My words are my words, and here they are. A little history on this area. In 2008, or it might have been 2009, the Public Works Director at the time, Nancy Crushhour, was tasked with the, to put the site, the current, that site into the Public Works facility. At that time, the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association filled the room and made noise about suing the city. So yes, it's been talked about for 10 or 12 years. At your last meeting, I heard some comments about, we don't have enough parks, we need flat land. This been before Prac twice. Well, I can't think of any neighborhood that doesn't have or doesn't want more park space. Look at Park Place. They have just one city park. Yes, it's been before Prac twice, and of course, they want it to be a park. But we, the citizens, have not had an opportunity to discuss what the land could be used for, because it's been available for about a year, year and a half since it was no longer considered part of Public Works. So then, at your last meeting, I heard comments about money isn't relevant, regardless of value. So those comments concerned me, so my comment to you is, maybe the value or the money does not matter to me, or to you, or to some of you, but it's extremely important to me. And when you're talking about public money, you have to have all the facts presented to you so you could make an informed decision on what to do. The more information you have, the better. Then came the comment about the lawsuits. The McLaughlin Neighborhood is not known for, the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association is not known for compromising. And why should they? If I was in their shoes, maybe I wouldn't either. Just a quick reminder that it takes three votes to move anything forward, including a lawsuit. Then it came to, regardless of what anybody at the city says, the citizens, including the majority of the Commission, want the Upper Yard to be a park, because they've always considered it to be a park. Well, that concerns me, because if you don't follow these laws, then are there other laws that you're not following? So just a general comment is, you have to pay back the utility funds. So is, because of the purchase of the house, so is that coming out of general funds, Public Works, or park funds? We already have a $25 million deficit in park funds maintenance. So my, my advice, my suggestion is, maybe you can put it to an advisory vote and see what the citizens want. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ricks, anybody else?
Uh, nope, there's no one else.
Okay, I have Commissioner Zahn.
Well, I've listened to everything that's been said. I've pondered it at length. If I were to make a motion, it would have a number of caveats to it. It would simply say that upon the completion of the lotline adjustment, upon the removal of the Adair Buildings, upon the reversion of the Armory property, and in deference to former Mayor Doug Neely and other statements made, upon completion and review of public opinion, whether that be an advisory vote or some other methodology, I would, I would move to add the Upper Yard and designate the Upper Yard as part of the Waterboard Park. That would be my comment if I'm called upon to make it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
So a couple things here. I've been pretty vocal on this subject for a long time. In fact, I think I've at least once or twice made the motion to make this a park. So we're getting there, citizens, we're getting there. I will say that one of the things that I want to find out more about is the map. And I agree with some of Commissioner O'Donnell's questions or points. The map that was sent to us that Commissioner McGriff kind of pointed out to a missing piece, and Jesse Bus also in his email to us, pointed out a missing piece. There is a, there is a piece that is on the upper part of, above the lower part, no, it's above the Public Works Site. There's a little piece there on the south end that kind of connects to what would be South Center Street on the lower part. That piece, I think, is crucial to being added in. It is above the cliff, and it should be part of that map that we show with the blue dotted line. The reason that that's so important, and then I'll also talk about the house, I believe the house that we're talking about is the one marked 306 in the map.
Yes.
So, so that house was purchased so we could get easy access in there for Public Works, or make it easier around that corner. I, I understand that if that house was purchased with other fees, that we might have to reimburse that. My, my, my question would be, or my, my consideration that we should talk about is this. If we are moving towards making the both lots, 1700 and 500, both part of the park, then we need to add that one piece that's missing, and we need to then have a discussion about the house. I would argue that that house is just as important to the access of the park as it would be to the access of the Public Works Site that we had originally planned there. And that's because that adds a wider part of that property to a connection to South Center Street. We have now got sidewalks for the first time on South Center Street that allow a connection to the promenade, which means that those two pieces, that knob that was not in the city map, and the house, would widen that connection to South Center Street that would allow for access to the museum and the promenade to Waterboard Park and the current, upper Waterboard Park. So I think we should consider that in, in this conversation. I believe that it's in our best interest to have both lots with that additional knob that's missing and the house as a park.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Lyle Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't, I don't believe, Mr. Conkle, you're bringing the house subject forward tonight for discussion.
I, I, that was, no, I did not. I think, so just to, just to clarify, Commissioner Smith, that was my error on the blue line. It, it, it should have followed the cliff line around the corner to the piece that we're talking about at Center Street. So that was my mapping error when I put that together. The, the house piece that I'm talking about is Tax Lot 1700. That's, it, it's, it's, it's right off of.
First Street.
First Street. It was demolished. It's.
Right.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, different one.
That's the one that I'm talking about. That was purchased by the utility funds, and my understanding was, you know, we wanted to look at it, you know, is there another way to access it off First Street? And because of topography, there's not. The house that you're talking about, Commissioner Smith, I think that there's probably more discussion, because I understand your concern. It's the same concern we had for vehicular access when you go up that road. You know, should we do a lotline? Should we do a lotline? Sorry, sorry, go ahead. I'll stop.
One at a time, please. Ms. Conkle?
Okay. So the house, I think, is another discussion, whether we should do a little bit of a lotline. I mean, there's, there's significant topography challenges there, even, even doing a lotline with the house of retaining walls being needed in order to move that road over to make it a little bit wider. But that is the only access because of the cliff face along South Center. There is no other realistic vehicular access there. But that house was also bought with utility funds, and I think the appraisal handed up around 525. I could look exactly. But I guess I'd just like to understand if the Commission really wants to include the house as part of the park. as part of the park, or maybe just looking at, do we do some type of a lot line adjustment and then sell it? And then those funds go back to the utility?
Okay. So, so for where I'm willing to go tonight, I, I think that, that house, the one that Commissioner Smith's talking about is kind of a separate conversation of what to do with it. I think we can move forward with all the other, other items. My question is, how much are the utility funds for tax lot 1700 that we need to reimburse? And where are those funds coming from?
Um, I'm sorry, I was just looking for the purchase price in 19, or I'm sorry, the Public Works Department, in January of 18, 2006, the commission approved the purchase of that property at $154,000 plus 1,350 miscellaneous closing costs. So it was a total of 155,350. You know, I, I do need to talk to Bill a little bit. If, do we, do we, do we apply 14 years of inflation?
Do you use the current value?
It's not a buildable lot.
Understood. And, and, you know, there may be that it's actually the appraised value or is it reimbursement? And there are a variety of different ways that could be done and that's something we haven't looked at.
So we're not sure of the funds, where they would, how much it would be and, and where those funds are coming for in order to include this lot.
Because when we purchased it, it had a house on it.
Right, right.
And we've demolished the house. So obviously, the appraised value is going to be less because it would just be raw land with access issues potentially.
Right, okay.
But I'm, I'm imagining it's somewhere in that, you know, at a minimum reimbursing what was paid for from the utility at a minimum. And then where it would come from, we, I'd have to sit down with why. I mean, it's, it's going to be, essentially, it's going to be a general fund expenditure.
Yeah, we, we have lots of requests for general fund expenditures these days. So it, it needs to come into the equation. I'm supportive of it. So you have a list of items in your staff report where you're asking for directions. So I, I can tell you where I'm at on this. I support that tax lot 1700, assuming we can work out the utility funds and, and where that, how that's going to be reimbursed to the utility fund. So I would love, I think it's, that, that tax lot should go into the Charter Park. Tax lot 400 is the Armory building. I think that tax lot should go into the Charter Park. I'm concerned about the order of things. I want to make sure we deal with the Adair buildings and make sure we get that correct. But in order to do that, I think the next step is to work on the tax line, tax lot line adjustment. And so I'm supportive of Mr. Buss's, you know, drawing, which is similar to yours, just missing that, that one piece down on South Center Street. I will say, when I talked to John Lewis, I, I went out and did another tour of this site. Tony, you and, you and I and, and John Lewis went out because I wanted to rewalk it, re-talk about all the buildings that were there, you know, refresh my memory of all the intricacies of, of the property. And, and part of what we've been dealing with from Public Works, since John Lewis isn't here tonight, I'll say is just, we haven't, we haven't quite figured out where all of that stuff is going to go. There is stuff on that property that is actively being used. Yes, it's, it is cleaned up. It has a variety of uses. One of the compromises that, you know, we were all standing around kind of brainstorming what we could do with this property. I do like, the one thing that is part of this whole First Street and moving up to First Street and all of that conversation is this merging of our Parks Department and Public Works. And we haven't yet figured out where all of the Parks equipment is going to go yet. And I, and I know that this commission has had several conversations about that. So I will say, and I just want to be very transparent with everybody, that one of the solutions that we kind of talked about, I don't remember who mentioned it, but I thought it was a great idea, was that if this does become park property like we're talking about, it could perhaps solve some of our facility issues of putting Parks equipment on a park property because that is allowed. Parks could use some of that building or store equipment there. If, if we want to move this forward without solving all of our other issues, that's the only way I can get there. Because we have other issues that we're trying to solve and they're not solved yet. And so we're trying to move this forward and support the community. Just know that we could swap out some of that Public Works stuff and it could become a storage area for some park stuff because, like I said, we haven't resolved all of that. And that is within the allowable uses of park property. And so with that, I will say, you know, obviously, I just want to be transparent about that and that we have other issues that haven't been solved yet, but we are trying to move this forward and we want to move it forward. So that could be an interim solution and a good compromise.
If you want to make that motion, I will second it.
So that is where I'm at and I'm willing to make a motion on that.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Just some clarification. I'm not talking about lot 1700, I understand that. The access that comes in off of South End Road, past the house that we own, are we going to have to do a lot line adjustment or partition off that road so that that becomes part of the park for future access?
I, I, I think that the question is, well, it's, the road is primarily within right of way. But it's, but it's very, very narrow around that 90-degree turn. Because, so the, so we would have to do some work to look at, what can we, is there anything that we can do with that house to give us some additional property and still meet zoning requirements for lot size to allow some additional space? I would not recommend making it part of the park. It would, realistically, it would probably be more appropriate as right of way.
I would like to say something, Mr. Mayor, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Um, if Commissioner McGriff wants to go first, that's fine. I just, I had my hand up.
It's involving what Mr. Mr. Conklin was saying about the, the access.
I'm okay with that.
So just real quickly, the, the one issue with that access is that they were looking at widening it so that there could be truck access up there. I don't know if we need to have access for trucks if it's going to be used as a park. People could access it by vehicle from the other direction and that could be a pedestrian-only access way to walk up there. There's.
Yeah.
And that way, that retaining wall is literally right on the edge and there is really no way to move it. I knew the former residents and spent quite a bit of time up there and we stood there many a day looking at that. And it was when the Public Works trucks came up there that they almost hit the wall every time. But that wall cannot be moved. It is, there's nothing else holding it up except that.
Right.
So I think trying to widen it or do anything else to provide, you can get up there with, I mean, I can get up there with my Subaru. If you had something bigger than that, there's, no. You, you can't really do it and make the turn. So I would not want to suggest that we do any lot line adjustment because, like you said, it is right of way. We do already own it. And future park planning for that could look at that. But I would not recommend, knowing what I know about the geotech in that area, I would not recommend us even touching that. We'd be asking for more harm than good.
Okay, I'm okay waiting to have that conversation another time. But I, one of the things I wanted to say is, or ask a question about, is Jesse still on the phone or Cameron or, and actually, Commissioner McGriff might have the answer to this question too, or anyone else. One of the comments made was that kind of implied that McLaughlin Neighborhood doesn't compromise. They sure do, and they sure do a lot. In fact, I believe that McLaughlin Neighborhood is pretty dang patient, if I might add, on all of these, on this specific topic. One concession that they've already made, I believe, was the whole conversation about the Adair buildings. Now, we did get an email from Jim Noceta asking about the Adair buildings, but my memories was that we kind of had a discussion about those that there would be reuse of the, the buildings and, and, and there would be a process to go through before the buildings were torn down, essentially. And that the Neighborhood Association kind of gave the blessing to that, you know, kind of as a gesture to move forward to making this a park. That's my, that's my recollection, is that accurate?
I guess just to, I guess just to clarify, process is that the process would be, we would advertise that anybody who would like to take them, so not a land use process, more of a, a notification process. These are available while we've got the RFP out looking for the demolition contractor, should no one agree to come take the buildings. Then we, if that happens, the time passes of when they were available, we would move forward with the demolition of the buildings. Prior to that, we would document the buildings. That, that, that's, that's the process that I'm talking about.
Mr. Conklin, just as a point of order. So if the buildings are demolished, can we put in the ad that it's deconstruction? I already know some people who've talked to me already. They want some parts of it, but they're not demolition contractors. They would like some pieces off of it. And if we had a contractor who would be willing to take those pieces off and people take it away, that would be another issue.
Commissioner McGriff?
I think she already went. We can certainly talk, it's, it's, it's additional expense for the buildings.
That way it doesn't get crunched and thrown away. Yes, sir.
So I know that the Adair Foundation has said that they would like to have, you know, some pieces of the buildings if they came down. I think they were talking about roof struts and some other things. Certainly, I would be supportive of that kind of thing. And if, you know, rejuvenation, house parks, somebody else, you know, other historical folks who do that kind of thing, I would be happy if they were, want to do that at their expense. I wouldn't want it to be at the city's.
No, it wouldn't be at the city's expense. I agree with you, it would be at their expense.
Okay, anybody else have a comment before I do?
Make a motion.
I have one more question.
Commissioner Smith?
If we gave direction for staff to move forward on the lot line adjustments, what would be the timeline for that coming back? I want to really know what the timeline would be for us being able to make a motion to make those pieces apart officially? Is, are we talking a week from now, two weeks from now, a month from now? What would be the timeline in having that piece ready so that we could move forward on designating this as a park?
I think it'll, it, so a couple of things. I put in the, got to hire a consultant to help us. We're going to have to survey the property, redo lot lines. We're going to have to determine, and I'll have to work with Laura, why I put in their lot line or partition. And I'm going to get a little wonky here. But you used to be able to go to Clackamas County Tax Assessor and record a taxing lot versus a legal tax lot. So just, you know, want to make sure that I have a legal tax lot to do a lot line adjustment off. If these were just recorded, we're going to have to determine whether they're actual legal lots of which, if that's, if that's not the case, I have to do a partition, which is going to take a little bit longer. But Commissioner Smith, this is going to take probably five to six months. By the time I get a consultant, get surveys, get legals drawn up. If we do a lot line adjustment, the city reviews it, approves the lot line adjustment, that, that needs to be taken to the recorder and recorded at Clackamas County. Partition, same kind of process, except for then we go through a land use process to partition it. So we've got.
Type 2.
Public notice, type 2 staff report, potential appeal. Then that needs to be recorded as well. So we can get it moving, it's just there's some unknowns in terms of timing, getting surveys. It's, it's, it's not a small survey, identifying that line across the top. So my, 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 my best guess is probably five to six months.
So like November.
So my worry about that is this. You know, we definitely need the answers to those before we designate this officially as a park. I've already made the motion in the past to do so, make this a park. We have waited so long to kind of have these conversations. You know, is there any way that, short of actually designating it apart, that we make some sort of resolution or statement that the intention in, in moving forward with this tonight and the lot line adjustments is that we have the full intention that this becomes an official park? I, I, there, there needs to be some sort of assurance to the public that we're not going to continue to delay this. And especially when we get a timeline that's post-election.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm, I'm not finished.
Well, actually, Commissioner O'Donnell was up first and you just butted in.
That's not true because actually, we let Commissioner McGriff speak before I did.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Please continue.
Go ahead, Commissioner Smith.
So my point is, we are not going to, we, we as a commission have a consensus, it sounds to me tonight that this is going to be a park. So I want to be clear that the intention is that. And I don't care how long it takes to go through the legalities of it. We want to assure the public this is going to be a park. And, and put that question to an end and then we can officially designate it once we have the documents we need. But I, I don't want this continued another year or two years or 100 years.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Well, was that not the intent of my, my initial motion, which was saying, I'm trying to wrap this all up into one, one ball that we can get this done. So I said, upon the completion of the lot line adjustment or necessary partition, upon the removal of the Adair buildings, upon the reversion of the Armory property, and upon completion and review of public opinion, whether that takes the form of an advisory vote or whatever, then the motion would be to add the Upper Yard and designate the Upper Yard as part of Waterboard Park. Commissioner, does that not accomplish what we wanted to do?
Not the last thing.
What, what part doesn't? I'd, I'd like to hear the conversation.
Commissioner O'Donnell, I concur. Well, I also like the item, the statement that Commissioner Lyle Smith said about, we can look at an interim use there for the Parks Department. I think that's an excellent idea. I don't, we already have the recommendation from the Prac. I don't want to, this, I think having the resolution not take effect until we have the vote of public opinion, I think that's for a master planning process. And I would, I would concur with everything you said, but I would like you to remove the last statement. I think we have our Prac that will run through a public process with what the programming will be for the park, but I don't think that should hold it up.
And I, I actually entered that, my fellow commissioner, in deference to, to former Mayor Neely's input.
I, I concur with everything he said except that.
Yes, yes, sir.
Can you read us the statement from Carl Law, the Chair of the Berkeley Hills Neighborhood Association?
Going to make a motion?
It's not attached.
It's not attached.
Hold on just a second.
Did we get something from Berkeley Hills?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we did.
Let's do this.
Mr. Mayor, you asking us to read it into the record?
Yeah, hold on, I'm going to pull it up so everyone can just see it here.
Yes, ma'am, I am.
All right. Is.
Out of communication, so I didn't get anything.
Oops, sorry.
Okay, attention, City Commission. Wanted to make another statement to endorse the Waterboard Upper Parking Lot to be added into Waterboard Park. Previously, I have endorsed this because my own interests and concerns for the community. Searching this further, researching this further, I am concerned how it impacts my neighborhood, Berkeley Hills. As I have mentioned before, this park neighbors, this park, yeah, neighbors Berkeley Hills, the east side entrance near Quarry Street, Third Street, Oak Street, and East Street. Personally, I think the community itself and neighborhoods surrounding Waterboard Park should be included in the decision process. It is concerning much. should be included in the decision process. It is concerning, much of the public is unaware of what is happening and had no opportunity to give feedback. As a CIC volunteer, other than neighborhood associations, it is very difficult to reach the public. Only CIC members who utilize social media are able to communicate to residents who use it. Many of our residents are not on social media, not technologically savvy, and neighborhood meetings may be too difficult to attend. I've talked to a few of these folks, and from who, from what I am hearing, are interested in Waterboard Park and Waterboard Upper Parking Lot. Barclay Hills Neighborhood Association is scheduled to vote on this July 14, 2020, whether to endorse this. Our steering committee feels it is important. Our residents have a say on our neighborhood park. It is concerning to use this area other than a park. It has never earned property tax revenue, and it is an area that the geography is unstable. The target, the tragedy for me is if this land is used for anything else other than a park, Oregon City will lose all opportunity in this area for the community. Thank you for your time and hours you volunteer investing in Oregon City.
I'd like to make a motion.
The mayor is muted.
Or did he? I always want to try to get your language in there. Want to try to get your language
Um, Mayor, are you there? You're muted.
I heard something click off like a phone getting off.
Mm-hmm. Did we lose him?
I mean, one option would be instead of listing the particular concern or, or steps that ask go to, just have a motion that it is the sense of the commission that the upper yard be designated a, a charter park in the future, once all necessary steps are taken to, to have, to allow this to be accomplished, or, or something that simple. And, and, you know, because I think what I'm hearing the commission say is, there are a number of preliminary steps we've got to deal through, but right now, the sense of the commission is, we want this to be a charter park. Is that a fair?
It's close enough, but I want it, I, I like, what the city manager had stated here is that, once the partition or lot line adjustment is completed, an ordinance designating the applicable tax lot would be brought forward for, I want that in there.
Okay.
We, we, we stop for one sec while we figure out some technical issues.
Yeah, we lost, we lost him there.
Testing. Can you hear me now? Rocky, can you hear me?
Oh, boy.
Where's Frank?
So, Mayor Holliday says that...
Can you hear me? Testing. Can you hear me?
So, they're saying that they can hear, they can hear on Zoom, but they cannot hear anything that's going on in the room. So, something just happened with the audio.
I know, I heard something go glee.
Yeah.
Like, like I said, like a phone got hung up or something. That's what I heard just before.
Lose. I can try recalling. I don't know. I can hang up and try.
Right. Katie is going to try, I think. Audio.
Frank's muted anyway.
Yes, I think we're close to make an emotion to wrap up this item.
Love technology. Works every time, doesn't it?
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound.
Katie is trying to reconnect audio right now.
Enter your participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise, just press. Please enter the meeting password followed by pound. You are in the meeting now. There are nine participants in the meeting. You are muted. You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six. You are unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, finally.
We're up.
Yay.
Sorry about that. I don't know what happened.
It hung up on us.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Let's start at the letter. Let's, let's go again, Katie. Go ahead and read the letter.
She already read the letter.
That was really hard for me to get through. I'm sorry. I'm not an extremely great reader, so I can show it on the screen again. You can read it, or someone else can read it.
Please don't read it again.
Commissioner McGriff, I asked to have it read into the record. It's going to be read into the record.
She read it into the record, Mayor. We were sitting here listening to it.
For anybody who was watching on Zoom.
Attention, City Commission. Wanted to make another statement to endorse the Waterboard Upper Parking Lot to be added into Waterboard Park. Previously, I have endorsed this because of my own interests and concerns for the community. Researching this further, I am concerned how it impacts my neighborhood, Barclay Hills. As I have mentioned before, this park neighbors Barclay Hills, the east side entrance near Quarry Street, Third Street, Oak Street, and East Street. Personally, I think the community itself and neighbors, neighborhoods surrounding Waterboard Park should be included in the decision process. It is concerning, much of the public is unaware of what is happening and had no opportunity to give feedback. As a CIC volunteer, other than neighborhood associations, it is very difficult to reach the public. Only CIC members who utilize social media are able to communicate to residents who use it. Many of our residents are not on social media, not technologically savvy, and neighborhood meetings may be difficult to attend. I've talked to a few of these folks, and from what I am hearing, are interested in Waterboard Park and Waterboard, woo, Upper Parking Lot. Barclay Hills Neighborhood Association is scheduled to vote on this July 14, 2020, whether to endorse this. Our steering committee feels it's important our residents have a say in our neighborhood park. It is concerning to use this area other than a park. It has never earned property tax revenue, and it is an area that the geography is unstable. The tragedy for me is if this land is used for anything else other than a park, Oregon City will lose all opportunity in this area for the community. Thank you for your time and the hours you volunteer investing in Oregon City. Sincerely, Carla Lawes.
Did you, did you hear that?
Thank you, sir. Yeah. So, I didn't see anybody else's hand up, so I'm going to say what I'm going to say, and that is, is that I agree with this law, is that we haven't had a community-wide, a city-wide discussion about this land. We've had, you know, some discussions in PrAC and in City Commission and some other places, but a couple of years ago, when we had our, our commission retreat, we talked about having a rather extensive public process about this park, just like we talked about, just we had a public process talking about the library and the new library building. And we have not had that yet. And just because one area of the city thinks that this should be a park, doesn't change the fact that this has got a value of at least a couple of million dollars that could reduce the park's maintenance budget in other parks in the city. And if we talk about Park Place, which has almost no parks, and in other areas of the city as they develop, and we, you know, obviously talked tonight about not doing an SEC in the Simmer Creek Plan, I, I think honestly that we should ask the, all of the citizens of Oregon City about what we should do about this. And we have an opportunity coming up in November that we could ask the citizens the question. Do we want to give this over to a park, or do we want to spend the money, or we want to take the money that we could get from this and do the deferred mains in other places in our city? So, I'm not saying I believe either way. I just think that there needs to be a bigger discussion that we have not had citywide yet. And there'll be arguments that, you know, this person or that person, or this group or that person has argued about this, but the fact is, is we haven't had a general discussion over the city about this, and, you know, I don't know what the big hurry is. Commissioner Smith?
Um, I don't know how this is a big hurry, because we've been talking about it for 10 years in this community. So, there's been gaps in between and different plans in between, but clearly watching that video and the history of the city, there's lots of references to this always have been a park. Now, we can debate the legalities and all that. I don't even want to go there. The fact is that we know exactly what the mayor wants to do here, and he has been delaying this for years. Now, it's interesting that he uses one of his biggest critics' letter as a support for his basis of a public process, when in fact, even in her letter, she says it shouldn't be anything other than a park. I mean, it's ridiculous. And then one public comment tonight is from someone that sleeps with the mayor. You know, it's like the last meeting.
That's uncalled for, sir.
Well, I was saying.
It's absolutely uncalled for.
I'm just saying.
No, that's uncalled for.
Well, I was, I'm just saying that here's the issue. We had public comment last meeting, and the only person to speak against all the other citizens was Betty Mum, and tonight she does that again. And nobody else has said anything other than supporting this. It's come to us at least two last meetings of the City Commission about this topic. You know, we're not designating it a park tonight. That wasn't what we were doing. We're moving forward and doing the lot lines, okay? So, I don't know what you're talking about. And clearly, the consent, the, the, there's a consensus already on the commission, as there was at the last meeting, and you continue to delay it.
Well, you're welcome to make your opinion, sir, but I'm not trying to delay it. What I'm saying is that, oh my gosh, you know, you and Commissioner McGriff, and in fact, all of us have said that we want to hear what the citizens of Oregon City say about this, and we haven't heard that yet. We've heard from, you know, activists and neighborhood associations. We haven't heard from the average citizen, and we have an opportunity in November that wouldn't cost us anything to find out what the citizens think, and I just think that we ought to give them the opportunity to tell us.
I'd like to make a motion.
Anyone here, I'm going to make a motion. I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
If anyone...
Commissioner Smith?
There's only one person in, in the commission chambers or on the commission right now that the majority of the community does not agree, speaks for them, and doesn't represent them. We clearly know that. And so, right now, us, you know, continuing to debate this is ridiculous. I would like to make a motion to move forward with the lot line adjustments, and basically, the, the, the motion that Commissioner O'Donnell was going to make earlier.
How do you mean?
You're muted. You're muted, Frank.
I'll second his motion, but it needs, it needs further definition.
Could I try to summarize?
I'm sorry, I hate to hear that. Commissioner McGriff, what did you say?
I said I'd like to second the motion, but it needs a little further definition, and I'd like to ask Mr. Conkell to summarize, because it's in the staff report.
Okay, before we do that, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Well, I've made the motion twice, and then I guess the only question is, the only thing that was objected to was the addition of the completion and review of a public opinion or advisory vote. And I can read my motion in its entirety again, and I, I need to make sure that it's, everyone understands it. So, should I read it one more time?
I have to ask a question. Did your motion get a second? Because I don't remember that.
No, it did not.
It never got, it did not get a second.
All right. Well, and Commissioner Smith's motion is on the floor, and it has a second. Mine is some kind of confusion, so Commissioner McGriff?
I was just asking Mr. Conkell to summarize, but I agree with Mr. Gabisman that we make a motion to, it is our intent to designate this area as part of Waterboard Park. I would like to add, to suggest to Commissioner Smith that we add item one, item two, item three, and item four, as specified in the city manager's staff report.
I... Commissioner O'Donnell?
I struggle with the motion as stated because Commissioner Smith referenced what I put forward. I don't know if he wants to do it in entirety or exclude some portion of the motion that I put forward.
So, the motion that was made by Commissioner Smith was move forward with the lot line adjustment with the, the portions of the motion from Commissioner O'Donnell that received a second and is currently on, on the floor. Commissioner McGriff has made another motion.
No, I just said, is that, are we clarifying that? I agree with everything Commissioner O'Donnell said, except for the last part.
So, maybe the thing to do is, City Manager Conkell summarize his understanding of Commissioner Smith's motion, which incorporated Commissioner O'Donnell's motion.
Right, go ahead.
And the motioner and seconder can determine if they agree.
Right, perfect.
The motion would include that staff will move forward to hire a consultant, prepare a partition or lot line adjustment of tax lot 500. Tax lot 1700 will be included in the property, and the utility funds will be reimbursed. The Armory Building will be included in the Charter Park, whether it's under ownership or at a future date upon ownership of, by the city.
You mean the Armory Lot?
Yes.
The lot, because the building's gone.
Yeah.
Um, once the lot line adjustment is completed, an ordinance designating the applicable tax lots will be brought forward for commission consideration. Staff understands that the Adair buildings must be demolished or withheld from designation as a Charter Park. It is not the commission's intention to retain the two buildings.
Commissioner Lyle Smith, I can't see your hand raised, so do you have any for us?
No, I, I agree with Mr. Conkell's summary, so I think the question goes to the motioner and the seconder as to whether or not they agree that that was their motion.
I agree with.
Commissioner Smith?
You agree with Rocky? Is he muted?
Well, the, the question is that concerned with Commissioner McGriff was the, the public process or whatever?
That's not in there.
Okay. So, I'm, and, and then, but you, I'm summing, the intent was that also this is that the intention is this will be a park?
Yes. So, I concur with everything City Manager said.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Well, I find it amazing that every commissioner up here has encouraged public involvement until this moment where we don't want it. And I struggle with that.
That's not true.
That is not.
One at a time, please. Let Commissioner O'Donnell finish his statement.
The only part of my motion that was not approved was the part that said upon completion and review of a public opinion or advisory vote, and that was the part that no one wanted to include in the motion.
An advisory vote from who? We've already got one from PrAC.
We don't have an advisory vote from the citizens.
Well, I'm asking Commissioner O'Donnell where, what he's, what he's referring to, what advisory position, what, what, where does he want that from?
I, I think, and I agree.
I'm not asking you. I'm asking Commissioner O'Donnell.
Well, I'm sorry, but I'm still the mayor, and I get to say what I want to say, and I think that we should put it out for an advisory vote in November to hear what the citizens think about whether we make this park or whether you take the two and a half million dollars and we use it to, to further.
I'd like to call for a point of order.
In the rest of.
I'd like to call for a point of order, Mayor.
Excuse me, excuse me, I am not finished my statement.
You interrupted Mr. O'Donnell. He was asked a question, and you preceded him without letting him answer, so I'm calling a point of public procedure.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I was honoring the input by, by former Mayor Neely that... I was honoring the input by, by former Mayor Neely, that sought public input, and by the neighborhood most adjacent to the park that sought public input. And I'd like to hear from my commissioners individually if they want to include or exclude that in the motion.
Well, I honestly think that this is not a neighborhood decision, this is a citywide decision. We're talking about two and a half million dollars that go to park maintenance, um, and, and at the same time, start to help solve our low-income housing problem.
No, it isn't.
So, that's the question.
No, it is not.
I would add, I would add to the conversation that we customarily do not have citizens vote on the purchase of park land. So how does that differ?
Well, I, I disagree with you there, sir, but the fact is, is it has been a um, a wide-ranging discussion for a while, and um it's a big decision for the city, and I don't know that it hurts to a- ask the city weigh in.
Um, can I ask a question?
Certainly, sir.
Commissioner O'Donnell, if we um put into this motion a public um process to get input from the adjoining neighborhoods to the park, would that be sufficient?
Well, I think that's the most important part, because it impacts them directly. It sounds like they're in favor of it. Um, again, I, I fall back on a part that we do not ask the public when we decide to purchase park land.
I know that, so, so then I don't understand why you're not supporting this motion. So if you're, if the concession is that you want more input, what do you want that from? The public likes us, so if we are, we're in a stagnant place right now with this mo- motion, so I need to know from you, what does it take you to, to support it?
Well, I'd like to hear from you to join the neighborhood association that penned that letter.
So moved.
We already have a motion on the floor, and a second.
I'll remove it. I will remove it and make the motion with the additional addition of the, the neighborhood associations connected to the park.
I'm not withdrawing my second.
So rather than remove the motion, one thing you could do is if the uh, the person who made the motion and the seconder both agree to a friendly amendment, that could be done.
That's what I'm asking for.
I feel that we have had a lot of input on this, not from special interests, but from individual citizens. Berkeley Hills has had a chance to weigh in on this, Ms. Laws has weighed in on this. I would, between now and the time we get the ordinance, if people from Berkeley Hills want to come in or send in information to us about how they feel about it, I think that would be a good thing to do in the interim. I don't want to hold this up for yet another process, as Mr. Smith said, Commissioner Smith said, this has been ten years. I don't want this to turn into another Irmitzinger House, where nothing ever happens because we have people who all of a sudden decide they want to have a public process when they've publicly stated they don't like public processes. So-
So it appears a friendly amendment fails.
Well, I didn't say that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't say that. I just said-
I apologize for jumping the gun.
I'm interested in hearing from people. We have been talking about this and talking about this. I understand sometimes people are not technologically involved in stuff. Maybe we can send something, pardon?
Then we need to hear from Commissioner Lyle Smith, we're, we're, we're basically waiting to find out how to move forward. I've given several concessions already to move forward.
So I'm okay with your motion if it doesn't delay the process. I'm okay with your amendment if it doesn't delay getting this designated as a park. I'm not willing to wait till November.
I would like to hear from- I, well, clearly, I'm not either. I, I, I want to hear from Commissioner Lyle Smith, what's he think?
Commissioner Lyle Smith?
So, just to make sure, so was that amendment made or, or not?
He wants to hear from Commissioner Lyle Smith.
There is no, there is no motion on the floor at this point.
Okay.
He wants to hear from Commissioner Lyle Smith.
So um, I understand all of the points, what everybody's been saying. I do believe this project's been going on for a very long time. Um, I do not feel like um, I, I think we have a lot of work to do, and months and months of work to do before we ever get to actually designating this as a park. Our intention is to designate it as a park. We, I think all of our commissioners, four out of the five commissioners have declared an intent for us to eventually get to it being a park. Um, I would like to see some public outreach. I mean, if we've got six months before we're gonna finish this up, there's a lot that's gotta happen. I don't think there's any harm in actually putting out a survey, you know? Um, it takes little effort to put out a survey, put it on our website, and say, you know, um, that, that would be a compromise. I understand Commissioner Smith's um position, it's like, well, if, if we want public comment, if it's just that we need to get information from the neighborhoods, then we can get information from the neighborhoods um in the next couple of months, that should not be a problem. But I don't want to hold up this process, I think they're all supportive of it, um, and I think we should move forward.
Mayor?
Commissioner?
Um, I would hope that Ms., I would hope that Commissioner Lyle Smith would make a motion, or somebody else, but I just wanna-
I will, I will agree to your amendment, so we can vote. I will agree to your amendment, so we can vote.
So what is the motion and the amendment, please?
I believe the addition that Mr. Smith said was he wanted to have additional input from the adjoining neighborhood association that abuts it, so we've got Rivercrest, McLaughlin, and Berkeley Hills that abut this park.
Well, I can't support that, because I think the parks in Orion City belong to everyone in Orion City, not just the abutting neighborhood.
Call for the vote.
Is there any other uh comments from the commission?
Yes.
Call for the question.
This, there is a comment still.
The question is called, color roll.
I, I have a comment before the question.
I'll withdraw.
Call for the question is not debatable, sir.
I withdraw it.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Smith?
Commissioner Smith?
This is what happens when we have no confidence in our mayor. And, you know, this is, this is crazy. We clearly have a consent, we, we clearly have a consensus on the commission to move forward, and the mayor has been able to throw a wrench into it and spiral this meeting into chaos.
Well-
We're gonna do this for two more years?
I apologize for exercising my right of free speech, but the fact is that-
But we don't need to hear from you anymore, there's a motion on the floor.
Oh, well, so now you're running the meeting. So the point is, is that uh, you know, there obviously is not-
Your case-
It's not a consensus, because if we had a consensus, we would be done with this by now. So I will call for the roll, please.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye.
So now we're at the point, we're actually twenty minutes past, or almost twenty minutes past our normal time to make a decision about moving on. Um, do, do folks want to continue on with the agenda? We're gonna move it off to the next meeting.
Continue on.
I'd like to suggest that we defer um item seven D to the next meeting.
Is that the parklet?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, I have a concern about that.
Yes, so I think if we can get through seven E and seven F, we're, we can be done before ten thirty.
I think we need to do it.
I think that's possible. Commissioner O'Donnell doesn't think so, but-
You don't think so, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I think it's pretty unlikely, too.
It's the second reading.
At this point, um, Commissioner Lyle Smith, I'm gonna let you take over the meeting. I've, I've got to go lay down. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
What's seven F?
Um, so, before we make this decision, is any, does anybody have any major communications that are gonna come up at the end?
No, I'm, do not.
Mr. Conkell, do you have communications that's gonna come up at the end?
It would take a minute.
A minute, okay. So my goal is to get-
I have one.
My goal is to get out of here by ten thirty.
Absolutely.
So that gives us ten minutes.
Let's go.
Eight minutes with communications, leave time for a few minutes of communications. So let's see what we can get through. So I think uh we're all in agreement to move seven D. Sorry, Ms. Turway, those parklets are being moved to the next meeting.
I just agree with that.
Oh, you don't, you, you want, that's the one you want to talk about?
Yes, because we have deferred this now two meetings.
We're not gonna get through it by ten thirty.
Well, our businesses are waiting for us to make a decision. The chamber and the downtown have worked very hard on this. Um, and this was another delay by the mayor tonight by pushing that agenda back, so I, I just, um-
Do you want to make a motion?
I move to approve the parklets.
Second.
Uh, okay, so is there any discussion or questions? I actually have a question real quick um on this topic. I appreciate the vote, I think we can have a discussion quickly. Ms. Turway, just to confirm, this will start the temporary parklets, but there will be a break and a chance for the commission to come back and reevaluate and get input on how it's going before we continue on in the calendar, right?
That is correct.
Okay, um, I see-
So it essentially aligns with the seasons.
Right.
So once we get through the summer season, we'll be able to bring it back, kind of do a check.
And then we can reevaluate, yeah, that sounds good.
After you say whether we think it's a great idea or it didn't work.
Yeah, there's, I will say, there's lots of concerns about removing more parking from downtown.
Understood.
I think we're balancing that we support the, would support the businesses, but there's lots of concerns about parking. Um, Commissioner Smith? You have your hand raised?
It was from the floor.
Okay, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I have concerns with rushing through this, and I have it for a number of reasons. I'm concerned about safety matters when we put tables in the parking spaces. We've always talked about isolating, providing barriers. I've got concerns about the combination of this, in addition with our sidewalk uh most that we want to do, and I've got concerns if part of this starts to control private property. So those are my concerns, I think it's a mistake to rush through this, and that's, that'll be my stance.
All right, um, call the vote.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith? Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
No.
Commissioner Rocky Smith? Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
So I think this comes back and needs more discussion. Is there anything specific you'd like, need to include in the next agenda that's not included in this?
I think we just need time to go through it.
I think we just need the presentation and to go through it.
So we'll bring this back to the next commission meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
What I tried to do in the first place.
Yes, okay, um, moving on to seven E, this is the second reading of ordinance number twenty dash one zero zero six, Thimble Creek Concept Plan Code and Zoning Amendments.
Thank you, there's one item of business that we have to deal with first, and that's um in response to a request. I sent out an email to the commission, the record's currently closed, so the commission needs to decide if you want to um open the record and accept the email, or keep the record closed and reject it.
Nope.
You'd, you'd want to open the record if you want to use it in your decision-making, if you don't want to use it in your decision-making, then you can keep it closed.
I do, I do not. I do not want to reopen the record again. We opened it once, and that's, I, I'm done with it.
I believe reopening would restart the clock.
It would be, yeah.
In, in a legislative matter, uh, this would not.
We'd go back to the first reading.
It would not restart the clock.
No, it doesn't change the um, the text of the ordinance at all. So it, it wouldn't require restarting it, having another first reading.
Okay. Okay, so did everybody hear Mr. Kabeizman? That we could open the record because this, it doesn't have substantive changes to the code amendments, um, it would not take us back to the first reading.
So we could open, we could open, open the record?
We could open the record.
Put it in, close the record?
Right.
Go to your second reading.
And go to the second reading. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I, I, I was not, if it came this afternoon, I didn't see it, so.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I would like, I, I posed a question in the last meeting, and Mr. Kabeizman asked to, can he give us a mo-, the simplistic answer to, can we insist upon development of the economic portion of the, of this development prior to the residential? And my concern always is, you know, that was our plan, and now we're gonna, we're faced with becoming a bedroom community with no place to work, and everybody traveling and increasing burden our, our road system. If you would give us a very reader digest answer to that?
Sure.
Then I think we, I'm prepared to move on.
Commissioner O'Donnell, thank you. Um, I'll try to summarize as, as best I can. I guess the, the first thing to realize is that um the cons, bringing concept plan areas into the city is a long iterative process that begins with broad policies and generally narrows down into specifics. The city has already adopted the concept plan, and the plan doesn't currently impose any of those such limits. Some of the la, area, and the land in there has already been annexed into the city uh and rezoned to allow residential development, and, and so, you know, there's some limitations on what we can do given how far into the process we are. There are some steps we can take, such as depending on the status of a particular property, if there's an annexation proposed, we may be able to um take steps to not approve an annexation of land that is comprehensive and designated for residential because of its impacts on adverse effects on economic, social, physical. Uh, to the extent property has been annexed but not rezoned, we could possibly um uh not allow the rezoning, although that would be much better supported if we have this type of uh policy actually adopted into the plan documents. Um, and finally, there could be some options with how we invest in public infrastructure and where that is provided, but providing infrastructure to this area is already complex, and what that would do would not be so much restrict residential, you know, to the extent we did it, it would be to incentivize industrial development, but once we did that, we wouldn't be able to prevent residential development from taking advantage of the, the public infrastructure.
So the answer is, for this purposes of this development, we cannot impose this restriction, but we might want to consider it for future developments. Would that be accurate?
I, I think so. You know, there might be some specific cases.
Okay, I'm prepared to move on.
So Commissioner O'Donnell, it was um your comments that you were requesting to get added to the record, does this suffice?
Certainly, yes.
Okay, so I think, are we all in agreement, we're not going to open the record? Commissioner Smith?
Fine with that.
Okay, so I think we can do the readings?
Uh, we need a motion and second.
We need a motion.
I believe that we um-
Approve the second reading.
Approve the second reading of ordinance number twenty dash ten, ten zero six, Thimble Creek Concept Plan slash Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan Code Amendments and zoning amendments. Record that I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell's statement about trying to help guide the development for commercial first as opposed to residential.
Is there a second?
Seconded. Second.
Okay, ordinance number twenty dash one zero zero six, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City, amending the Oregon City Municipal Code Title sixteen, Land Division, Saddle seventeen, zoning, chapter seventeen point oh six oh two oh, official zoning map, the official comprehensive plan, and amending ancillary documents of the comprehensive plan, the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith? Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Do we, do we need to continue seven F?
Seven F, I mean, it requires the mayor's appointments, right?
Correct.
So I don't think we can do that one tonight.
Yep.
Correct, right?
I'd like to move the consent agenda.
Is there a second on the consent agenda?
Second it racial, so we can just get it done before ten thirty.
Oh.
As a presiding officer, um-
I don't think I could second.
Yeah, I think it would have to come from-
Commissioner O'Donnell, Commissioner Smith, you are not interested in approving the consent agenda?
Guys, it's just approval of the minutes, that's the consent agenda.
Yeah, I remember it, sure, I'll, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Well, there's something I want to put on a future agenda, but we can do that in our closing statements. Well, there's something I want to put on a future agenda, but we can do that in our closing statements.
Okay.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
All right. Communications, if we can get through this, we'll be lucky.
Okay, I can invite Mr., Mr. Graham in.
Mr. Graham?
And while he's coming, I just want to let the commission know that, um, I've been working with Patrick, uh, the HR director, the police chief, and, and my staff. We're bringing in, um, a gentleman named Mr. De La Cruz. He's going to start, um, in, with our internal staff on bias training and how beginning these discussions that we're hearing, uh, as it relates to racial equality, uh, social injustices. So, we are beginning that process. Um, this will be the second week in July. We will have training for our entire police force. And then we'll also have training for the entire executive team, uh, during that time period. And then we'll continue to build from there. And then I'll just turn over Mr. Graham for an extremely quickly, quick update.
Oh, yes, okay. Um, well, this is an update regarding the Oregon City, um, Business Debt Relief Initiative Round Two. I just wanted to give you an update. Um, uh, we will, um, be starting this program on July, actually on July the, um, the 15th, who will be taking applications. But it's important to, to realize that this program is for both for-profit and nonprofit, uh, businesses. And, um, it's, um, it's a program that will be providing grant funding. It'll be $2,500 set for all those who qualify, for all those who qualify and are eligible to receive this kind of funding. So, we're looking at, uh, on Monday, July 6th through July the 10th, Lori, um, Bell will be going out and talking to minority-owned businesses and socially disadvantaged, uh, groups about the program from July 6th to the 10th, to the, July 6th to the 10th. And then applications in Spanish and English will go online for public viewing on Monday, July 13th. And then, uh, we will start accepting applications on July 15th. So, um, and this program will continue until August the 19th.
And this is for small businesses with five employees or less.
Right, one to five.
Same criteria we had from before.
Well, some, some of-
With the state.
Yes.
Additions, yes.
The state additions.
Perfect.
That's it.
All right, any questions for Mr. Graham?
Go forth, give away money.
All right, thank you. Um, commissioners?
Commissioner O'Donnell had something.
Yeah, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll yield all of my time to him.
This is going to be real quick. You, this commission took a flyer at the Park Place Request for Crosswalks. It wasn't well thought out. I would like to put that item back on a regular commission schedule for a, a more in-depth discussion and review, rather than the way we approached it before. That's all.
Is there consensus among the commissioners?
Yes, I would agree with that. Uh, Mr. Conkell is looking for consensus from the commission on bringing that item back. Commissioner Smith?
It's fine.
I thought we had resolved it, but obviously, there's a bunch of misinformation out there, and I have concerns about that misinformation, um, misrepresenting something that the city commission did.
Right, I, I think the clarity needs to be made as far as where the money is coming from, even if, do we even have the funds for the crosswalks? We need to clarify and probably help the Public Works Department on where this project falls in the work plan and in the whole scheme of things. I think the, the neighborhood, um, obviously would like for it to happen, uh, very quickly. But, um, we all know that the Public Works had a full work plan and a full agenda, and a lot of capital projects planned for this biennium. And so, um, we just need to figure out where that's, we did not provide that direction, um, when we tackled the crosswalk situation. All right, the mayor's not here, so unless there's no further comment. Commissioner O'Donnell, your hand is still raised. Are you finished?
I just was stuck in place and didn't have enough energy to put it down, so here we go.
What a long evening. Um, so, thanks, everybody, for sticking it out. I think, um-
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks to everybody.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.